Could we have a roll call, please?
Director Morgan.
President.
Director Kildee.
I'm here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Secretary McDonald.
Here.
Chair Tremblay.
Here. All right, could we please have a flag salute? Mrs. Craven, could you lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly, please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
All right, do we have any public comments for Camarillo Sanitary District? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. I just noticed that, though, I do have a couple of quick questions on Item C, as in Charlie, but perhaps why don't we receive a motion for...
I move to receiving to authorize this consent calendar.
Second.
All right, I'd like to ask a question, though, with respect to Item C, for purposes of clarification. And this is on the pump and motor repair services, Mr. Clotzel.
Sure.
This is for a bid solicitation on pump and motor repair services. And I apologize if you didn't have a chance to check with you beforehand. What pumps and motors will be excluded from this bid solicitation? So, for example, the hydrostatal, uh, dirostatal centrifugal pumps, I have a hard time with centrifuge language, will be repaired by Flow Systems, Inc. as a sole source vendor. So I'm curious to know what will be excluded from this.
Correct, and this bid that we're soliciting bids to go out for services has the flexibility to include those also. If, if, if the information and the, the structure of the, the proposed agreement going forward could include those pumps, we would also. And essentially, we're, we're framing this to include all pumps and motors at the CSD could be included in this, in these services.
But there will be flexibility in the event that the city needs to go to sole source or there's some other
Correct.
circumstance that arises
Yes.
in which it's appropriate
Right.
not to go through that. Okay, all right. Any other questions from directors? All right, thank you, Mr. Clotzel. We have a motion and a second on consent. Let's go ahead and vote. And the vote on that motion is five to zero. Let's see, no items from the department? No items from legal counsel? Any, any comments from staff?
No comments.
Any comments from board members? All right, at this time, I'm going to recess the Camarillo Sanitary District meeting to later this evening at 7:30 PM or immediately following thereafter.
I'll call a meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order and ask that all, the record reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
I have a request. Normally, we hear public comments during the, at the 7 o'clock, 7:30 meeting. However, the fair board did not call us in time to get on the agenda for a short presentation, and yet somebody's here and would like to talk about, present us with a fair poster and give us a few words about it. And I was wondering if we could have some public comments right now? Okay. Okay, so we will take some public comments. This is on items that are not on the agenda. So Kayla Garcia, Ventura County Fair. Just pull that right down so you can speak into the mic and everybody can hear you.
I'm a little shorter. Hi, my name is Kayla Garcia and I'm from the Ventura County Fair. This is gonna be our poster for this year's fair.
That's pretty.
It's gonna be called Days this year. And our theme is a country fair with ocean air. This year, we're going to be having Dollar Day on the first, Feed the Need Food Drive on the second with UB40, featuring Ally Astro and Mickey. On the third, we're having Youth Day with the Plain White Tees. The fourth, we're having LeAnn Rimes. The fifth, we are having Alfredo Olivas, Ulysses Chávez, and Lorenzo de Monteclaro. The sixth, we're having Sublime with Rome. The seventh, we're having Seniors and Persons with Disabilities Days, also having The Fifth Dimension Performing, as well as Frankie Valli and Four Seasons. The eighth, we're having Three Dollars Before Three Day, and we're having Boys to Men Performing. On the ninth, we're having Military Appreciation Day, where they're able to enter free, um, they're able to enter the fair free with Hunter Hayes performing at 7:30. And on the tenth, we're having Creedence Clearwater Revisited Performing. And on the tenth and twelfth, we're having the PRCA rodeo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a nice, it looks good.
And Mr. Petropolis will take the poster from you.
You got a question? Do you have a list of the activities throughout the fair here with you?
Yes, they're gonna be in the insert.
Okay.
You have an envelope in front of you. She just read them to us.
Oh, this envelope right here. Sorry, I didn't see that envelope.
She just read them to us. And do you know that in our...
No, this is not all of them, Charlotte. This is a few of them. She hit some top ones, but there's more.
There is a fair post flyer in your envelope.
I know, but she didn't just let us have them all. They're in here, so...
Okay.
The full schedule of events will be on our website, eventuariaffair.org.
I was gonna ask, in the hallway out here, we have all of your posters.
Oh my God, that's awesome.
Yes, on, they're, they're on two sides of the hall.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for one other person to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. Brian Blake. And I forgot to say that we have a time limit of three minutes.
I read the card, thank you. My name is Brian and I'm a resident of Camarillo. I live at 1790 Regent Street. Recently, on June 24th, there was a traffic collision which resulted in a, a truck entering my backyard and running into my domicile. And I understand that there have been, this is not the first time that this has happened at this property. I just purchased the property last year in September. And there have been three traffic collisions there of some, you know, very severe nature since I moved in there. I understand that in speaking with law enforcement on, on the scene that they have brought up the need for a traffic signal with a red arrow at that intersection, which has not, has not yet been addressed. And, and I also, I'd also like for some of the community safety, not only to my property, but for other pedestrians, you know, making use of that crosswalk area and that, and the sidewalks, that some, maybe some posts be installed near the entrance into the crosswalk, being that this is, has happened several times. And I just, I'd like to, I don't know if you guys put this to a motion here or if it's just a topic for discussion or how your, your council works, but...
By law, if it's not on the agenda, we can't really discuss it and we can't take a vote, but we can certainly refer it to Public Works.
Can I, can I ask that address again where your back wall is? I mean...
1790 Regent Street.
Right down the street, yeah.
It's Brently and...
Oh, Brently, I, I recognize Brently. I know what happened down there in your backyard. How'd that whole wall fall over? I can't believe it, boom.
Yeah, it did.
I don't understand how it fell down either. The, the city cleaned up most of the remnants of the, the wall as they fell on city property. But I, I am in, in the process of gathering information to, with my insurance company, to rebuild the, the wall and maybe put some precautions on the other side to prevent that occurrence.
Yeah, good.
Okay, we'll refer that to Public Works. Thank you for coming. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the consent. Oh.
I just, I had questions on, just, just questions on two items, if I might.
Uh, which ones?
First one is G and the second is I.
Okay, Item G.
Okay to proceed, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, on Item G, this is the adjustment for Camarillo's Water Facilities, Mr. Clotzel, and I'm referring to big page, and again, I apologize for not being able to talk to you beforehand. I'm looking at big page four in the agenda packet. And it's specifically, it's with respect to Section 6B and Section 6D. And under 6B, there is a opportunity for Camarillo, after receiving a construction cost estimate, to notify the city that it will, that it will do the adjustment or relocation in a timely manner with its own forces. What is typically speaking, in the city's view, that timing?
So it really relates to the, the schedule of the construction project that the city has going on at the time.
Okay.
And we would obviously be working closely with Camarillo to determine at what point would their work need to be done so as to facilitate our work. You know, again, it would...
That's fair enough.
Timely is about the best.
Is about the best, okay.
Description we can put on that. And, and we already work very well and coordinate with Camarillo on all our projects, so...
Okay, then in subparagraph D, it discusses completion, and that's in the event of when the construction, estimated construction cost is 15% or higher, more than 15% or higher than the, than the construction cost originally estimated. And it doesn't have the same language in terms of timely completion, but that is the city's intent, correct?
Correct, yes, yeah, with both options for Camarillo to move forward on their own, right, it would be expected to be in a timely fashion.
Okay, and the city enjoys a good cooperative working relationship
Correct.
with, with Camarillo. Okay, the second, very quickly, Madam Chair, is on Item I, which is on the Cayenne Alto, no parking, any time restriction. Question relative to the picture, which is on big page three. Are the parked vehicles, are they from businesses on Cayenne Alto?
It, it's a mix. You know, we didn't actually do, check where and from, to and from they were coming from and which businesses, but there's been a mix of, of autos that are, and vehicles that appear not to be, you know, part of the business operations. And then there are some that could very well be part...
I guess the logical question I asked myself, the next question was, is there adequate off-street parking in that area?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
So we just have folks who are choosing to park on the cul-de-sac?
Correct, and
Okay.
and then really, the idea is to keep it free at all times if perchance there would be somebody parked there for when a vehicle goes down to turn around.
Okay, that, that concludes my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You hit the exact question we had on our committee. Are we still allowing to park outside that circle? And yes, they are.
Okay, good, I'm glad you asked that.
Okay, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. It's a stand to City Council, Citizens Initiative Measure for Term Limits, Argument Against the Measure, Item A.
Yes, this item is to consider the argument that's been drafted against the Citizens Initiative Measure. Previously, the council authorized Mayor Craven and Councilmember Tremblay to draft the argument. And it's provided in the packet for your consideration. We're currently in the filing period, so the filing period is July 24th to August 2nd. And I know there's questions about it, so the draft is in the packet for your review. I also have a comment card. Maybe we should start there and then move on to discussion or question.
Usually, we ask for council questions and then we take that and then we'll have our discussion. Are there questions on the staff report?
On the procedures?
On the procedures?
Is that what you're asking?
Tonight?
Not on the, not on the document, but on what Jeffrey just told us? Is that what you're asking for? Are we talking about the actual writing?
I was asking for questions on her staff report.
Just on the procedures?
Mm-hmm.
The one question I have, Jeffrey, if I might?
Certainly.
Is, so this is this, basically, the city's rebuttal being the jurisdiction.
Not the rebuttal, the argument.
I'm sorry, the argument against, I'm sorry. That, that's next, huh? So how does, how does that shown in the ballot? Does it just say City of Camarillo? Does it list everyone?
So I did contact the county and the, the authors and signers will be listed. It's not gonna actually say this is submitted by the city of, the city council.
So it will have Charlotte Craven, council members, for instance?
Right.
Not mayor?
I don't know. I was being generic here.
So our determination was that since it's submitted by the legislative body, that you'll review the argument, you'll take an action to submit it for filing. And whoever voted in support of submitting the argument for filing would have their names at the bottom, so that if somebody opposed it, we wouldn't be putting your name at the bottom of the argument.
And, but does it have a title as well? So it identifies you as being part of the legislative body?
Yes, it will be your name and a title.
So it'd be Charlotte Craven, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question on procedures.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do we have a card? Barbara Williams. And I know I don't have to tell you that there's three minutes, Barbara, but I will.
I would like for Mr. Tremblay to read the opposition that he and Charlotte wrote to Measure M so that those listening on TV tonight and those here tonight can see the contempt in what they wrote. Charlotte, if you'd prefer to read it, I'm good with that. Over 5,000 people signed our petition and you are showing contempt to those who supported term limits by showing your nastiness in this opposition. I want to make sure you're all listening to me right now. Tony, I truly don't understand why you're so against our term limits measure when you indicated, when you were running for city council, that you would be serving eight years. Yes, you felt eight years would be good for you, but now it is no longer good, Mr. Tremblay? I don't understand this. And you wanted 12 years maximum for term limits. What changed your mind? This got you into the office and now you change your story. Tony, you do know that it's not too late to withdraw your term limits measure. And anyone who wants to see Tony's statement during the election and your counsel in action, you can go to the Camarillo Concerns Facebook page.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? It's the only card I have. So, Mr. Tremblay.
Sure. Kicking off our comment? Sure, let me, let me kick off our comment.
Well, you had your arm out to...
I did.
Yes, that's why I thought you might like to speak first.
Well, first of all, in response to the comment, that was just, the comments that were just made, when one reads through this argument, I think one will readily see that there is no contempt shown. What we have here is a difference of opinion in public policy and what's best for the city, pure and, pure and simple. I'm opposed to the measure because I don't think it represents good governance for this city. My personal plan was to run, if I'm lucky enough to be reelected, first of all, if I run again and I'm lucky enough to be reelected again, is to serve for a maximum of eight years. That doesn't, that's for me personally. That doesn't mean that I don't, that doesn't mean that I share that same opinion with what is best for this city. And I never made a promise as to the total amount that I recollect, as to the total amount of time a term limits measure would be. I did make a commitment and a promise to introduce a term limits measure. And I waited for a year to do it, and then I did it. And then this measure, I introduced, my measure, and then the measure from the Camarillo Concerns or the, the group of residents that, that received signatures on the initiative came in after mine was, was introduced. As far as the argument itself is concerned, the draft argument is the result of, of hard work and compromises in language between myself and Mrs. Craven. And we each, I think it's fair to say, have different views philosophically on term limits, and so we just, we took that right from the top and said, you know, four of us have...
Right, at the beginning it says that.
Four of us are philosophically opposed to term limits and, and one is in support of term limits. I think that argument appropriately recognizes the split on this council regarding term limits philosophically and then focuses on the specific problems and deficiencies that we see in, in Measure M. My only request, this, because of the timing of our council meeting and the timing of the submission of this argument in time for this agenda packet, it ran together almost the same day, I think. I'm not quite sure, but very closely to the assignment of the actual letter designations for the measures. So my only thought would be, I would ask council to adopt this measure, but with the revision that is, at the very top, that it be retitled to say Argument Against and strike the word Citizens Initiative and simply say Measure M in order, simply in order to reduce confusion when someone is reading their sample ballot. Other than that, that concludes my, concludes my comment.
So it would say Argument Against Measure M?
Right.
That's what you're asking?
May I ask Jeffrey a question on that?
Certainly.
Won't that actually be the heading of that side of the page? Won't it say Argument Against Measure M?
No, I believe each argument actually has its own title. So remember, the sample ballot comes with like squares?
Uh-huh.
And so that square will be, you know, Argument For Measure M, Argument Against, and so each square will have its own little title.
But it doesn't have to be in the body of the, of the wording, does it? Isn't that part of the heading that the county puts on?
Well, it's actually your title. So you make the title, it goes in the box, and it doesn't count in the word.
Oh, so those don't count in the words, then?
Yes.
Okay. But won't it always say, you don't get to pick what you, what the title is? Isn't it Argument For, Argument Against, rebuttal of, da-da-da-da? Set county language.
No, because it says you can have a title.
Whatever you want to call it, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some limitations and they'd tell me once they received it.
Has to make sense.
Well, let me just say, as the other one who was working on this, I feel that just saying Argument Against Measure M is, is appropriate.
Is what?
Appropriate. So...
I have a question.
Okay.
Is there anything legally, as far as how we identify this? Do we, can we pretty much identify it any way we want to?
The title?
Yes.
No, I'm sure you can't do anything you want because specifically you want to say that it's your, it's your argument against the measure. I think they would leave that Citizens Initiative would be okay because that is how the measure got on the ballot. But there would be limitations as to what you put as your title.
I could, I could add, I could add to that that it would have to be accurate, of course, and could not be misleading is the standard.
Would, in your opinion, would both of them be accurate?
Yes.
Both of them as, the one that submitted it and the potential?
Either as written for the title or as suggested that it be modified, either one.
Well, let's just ask this. Is there any objection on the part of the council to removing the two words Citizens Initiative from the, the title?
Adding the M?
And adding M. Okay. So now we know what we're talking about, let's discuss the item.
I just have one request, if I...
Mrs. McDonald?
It's in this last paragraph, and it says, finally, ask yourself why Camarillo, why should Camarillo be different than every other local jurisdiction in, with term limits? I would request that we remove the word every because it implies that everybody's got it and just have it be, be different than other local jurisdictions with term limits. Because, if, to my knowledge, there's only two out of the 10 cities that have it. And I don't know that every...
And the board of supervisors?
And the board of supervisors.
So everyone that has it is what this implied?
It's what it's saying, but to me, it applies, if you don't know all of that, what it implies is that everybody else has it. And I don't think it take, really takes anything away from the meaning you're trying to get.
Okay.
Different than other local jurisdictions.
What are the feelings of other council members? Just remove, you're talking about removing one word, every, in the top line of the last paragraph.
That's, yeah, just the word every.
I can support that.
I can support that, too.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yeah, that, that wasn't the intent, but I see what you're saying. But if you're gonna do that, I don't have an objection to that, but I think you're gonna need to pluralize the word jurisdictions.
I think that's correct.
So finally, ask yourself, why should Camarillo be different than other local jurisdictions?
With term limits?
That's better.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
So with that, I, I have no objection.
Okay. So are there any other questions?
No, I assume you worked hard on it.
We worked very hard. There, there was a lot of compromise in this. Mr. Tremblay was the primary writer. I was the primary critic. And we came to something that we both could live with. I don't think it's hateful. I don't think it, I, I think it gives good reasons against it. And I'm sure that the people who write the rebuttal against this will have other words. So what are the wishes of the council?
May I ask Jeffrey one more question?
Certainly, certainly.
So this is the argument, and then there will be an argument against, then there will be a rebuttal to this, then the council can have a rebuttal to, to that? So how do we do that in the timeframe?
So that's the next issue. I don't know how many of you are gonna approve it and how many names you want at the bottom of the argument, but the election code provides that whoever is authorized to write the argument for or against is also, also authorized to write the rebuttal argument. So if we end up with a majority again, we will likely, unless you designate somebody to write on your behalf or two to write on your behalf, we're likely gonna have to come back. The filing period is August 3rd to the 13th, which would require a special council meeting if a majority of you are going to also sign the rebuttal.
And that we'll, we'll have to watch the timing because some of us will be at the CASA conference and that.
Well, there is another alternative, which is that you could allow Mayor Craven and Councilmember Tremblay, as they've already are authorized to do, to, to draft the rebuttal and designate that they do so and, and without it coming back to the council to approve what has been written in the rebuttal. If you do want to see it, as you have tonight with this opening argument, if you will, then you would need to have the special meeting to consider it.
But in that case, the scenario of having them do it, only the two of them would sign it, then?
Or on this, there're gonna have to be three if we approve it?
Three or five or whatever.
Or five, or what, I mean, at least three.
Right, but if the two, if we say, okay, the two of you write the rebuttal to the argument, then just the two would sign? They wouldn't sign the people, all the people that did the beginning one?
Well, you wouldn't have read it.
That's right.
Well, that's, I guess that's a good question. Are they doing it on behalf of the council or are they doing it on behalf of themselves as individuals?
Well, they are doing it on behalf of the council, but the councils could give them authority to do it on behalf of the council.
But then whose, whose signature, whose names on it?
Well, you could authorize them to file it on your behalf and it would be their names.
It's their names, not, mine wouldn't show if I'm not a party to doing it.
I just don't think you could sign it without council action, right? A majority could sign it without council action.
Well, I think under those circumstances, we're talking about a special meeting. And when, what would be the deadline to the special meeting, then? And when, what would be the deadline to the special meeting then?
Well, the filing deadline is August 13th, so August 3rd to 13th, and I did bring calendars for me, but you're right, the dates are limited, because we do have a conference. So you'd be limited to August 3rd, 6th, or 7th.
Well, let's discuss this first. I, I think we have to get, find out. So are there any, is there anything else on this argument? Argument Against? Or is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the Argument Against the Citizens Initiative Measure for Term Limits.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second?
It should be added, it has modified on the dais.
It's modified?
Yeah.
So the modification is removing, in the title, removing the word Citizen Initiative as presented and adding M after Measure? And then in the last paragraph, first line, removing the word every and adding S after jurisdiction to make it plural. So those are the, the modifications. Okay with the second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. So let's talk about the process after this.
Okay, so if that passed unanimously, I'm assuming that all five of you will be actually signing, signing the argument that gets filed. So there'll be five names at the bottom, correct?
I think that was, that was the way it was explained to us.
The next question is, do you want to authorize somebody to file the rebuttal on your behalf?
I, you know, Your Honor, I think that Tony's been right in the middle of this thing, and it's his baby, so I'd recommend that Tony continue with his efforts.
Well, I would like to volunteer to have the two of us continue.
Two would be fine, I'm just saying that, I want to make sure.
Because that's okay with the Brown Act, right?
Yeah, it is, and I thought that we'd already authorized whoever wrote the opening argument would then be entitled to write the rebuttal, is that already not in the resolution?
Well, it is, unless they, but they have five that did the.
Oh, I see what.
The question is, who signs it, and do we have a special meeting? That's the question.
That's the question.
Well, I will say that if, if it's possible, it would, I would be up for a special meeting just so that all of us have a chance to, to see it. If timing is such that we don't, then I guess we would have just the two of you sign it, but if possible, you know, a quick special meeting, at least that way we'd all see it.
Well, we first have to, the, the other people have to sign, have to turn in the rebuttal.
Right, you can't do it until you get.
Right, so that, that's a determinant, that's a determinant, so I think we can't really.
I'm sure they'll have one, I mean, obviously.
We can't really set a special meeting right now, because we don't know when that will be turned in.
I think the idea is whether you want to have one, and then, you know, or whether it's just to have the two of you sign it, I think is what the question is.
Your Honor, I have no objection to all of us signing if we want, because then it shows that we know, we're all approving this thing.
It requires a special meeting after it's turned in.
I understand.
What, what you could do is schedule your special meeting after the deadline for them to have submitted their argument, and I believe the city clerk had given a few dates that would fall into that category, so if those dates are.
What are those dates, again?
So the first one is August 3rd, but we'd have to notice the meeting before actually getting the argument, so that's probably not going to work. So that leaves us the 6th or the 7th, which is a Monday or a Tuesday.
Well, you could schedule it before you'd receive the arguments, if you wanted to do that, and, and.
Friday, then? No, it's a Friday, Monday, or Tuesday.
I would say the Monday or Tuesday.
I can only do it on Monday that week.
Monday is the best for me, too.
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to be in town on the 3rd, 6th, and 7th.
Uh oh.
And I think we've got members of the council who are going to be at CASA later that week, I won't.
The, the, I'm leaving the night of the 7th.
Right, and I, I won't be there, I won't be at that conference. Is the latest that a meeting could occur would be Monday, the 13th?
So actually, yes, you're right.
My suggestion would be.
We could do it on the last day.
My suggestion would be, why don't we meet on, if we have a special meeting, why don't we meet on Monday, August 13th?
Does it have to be in the evening?
Well, I have jury duty on the 13th during the day.
Does it have to be in the evening, though, of the meeting?
No.
No.
Reason I ask that is the 7th in the morning, I don't care if it's 10, 11 o'clock, there's, we're all here then, you're here too.
No, he's not.
No, I'm.
Well, I thought you said through the 6th.
No, I'm, I'm out of, I'm out of town on the 3rd, the 6th, and the 7th.
But that would exceed the filing deadline, because the 13th, the cutoff, would be 5:00.
5:00.
13.
7:00 in the morning?
Can I get to jury duty by 5:00?
Well, let me put it this way, I was at six and a half hours of Fox Canyon meetings all day, and I'm here tonight, so.
I just don't want to get put in jail, because I don't show up for jury duty.
Well.
No, let's not do this thing out of whack, we've got to make sure the public is also accommodated, so they could be here.
Yeah, 7:00 is a bit early.
And that's, I'd want to make it like 10.
Well, it can't, oh, she's on jury duty, it can't be at 10.
On 13th?
Unless you want to join me, and we're going to have it at court.
On the 13th. That's why I said 7:00 in the morning.
I, I do have something to add on this question. You could contact the jury commissioner, explain the circumstances, and see if you could arrive at, like, 9:00. Very rarely does, do juries get called before that, in my experience.
You're already going to get me put on the list already, huh?
Well, no, I'm just suggesting, if you call the jury commissioner, explain the situation, and ask if you could arrive at 9:00, or, or there's another choice, you could reschedule your jury duty to another day. I'm just saying these.
You can ask for any day that week, instead of being on call, unless you ask for the 13th specifically.
Let me ask a question, when will the, would you propose having the rebuttal ready for us to review?
Well.
Depends on when they.
It depends on when we get the, depends on when we get the argument, and I don't, what would be, what would be the last day, let me ask it this way, if I can this minute, one would be the last day that, Ms. Madeline, that we would see or, or receive the argument?
The 2nd.
And you're going to be gone, how are you going to write it?
On the road.
On the road.
He's going to write it wherever he is and do it by email.
And obviously, I'll be conversing with Mrs. Craven that week of August 6th.
But I will tell you, we did all of the other by, by email, we didn't meet in person to do this.
No, once.
Oh, that's right.
So when would you, do you think you'd have it ready for us to review it?
Assuming that we got it on the, what was it, the 3rd?
2nd.
The 2nd? To give us sufficient time to put it all together, I'd say sometime on the 8th, or maybe early the 9th. I'd rather have the 9th.
See, we, we have a policy that allows one person to telecommute us with permission of the council, as long as the person is not sick, and so you would be able to call in. The problem is, we can only have one person by our policy calling in, we, and by law, we couldn't have three of us calling in, so we could not do it on the 8th, 9th, or 10th, which gets us back to the 13th for your jury duty.
Well, I also have an issue, too, I'm going to be driving the 12th, I hope to be back by 13th, but.
You may not even be here.
Yeah. I'll for sure be here the 14th.
That's too late, isn't it? 5:00 on the 13th is the deadline.
I'm available up to the 10th of August, on any day.
Are we precluded from the weekend? Of either the 11th or the 12th?
I'm going to be on the road the 12th.
Oh, you're going to be on the road.
Well, that gets us back to the 2.
Tony, did you?
I think at some point, somebody's going to have to say they're not going to be at the meeting.
Kevin's not sure, he'll be here on the 13th either, at whatever time in the morning you're doing it.
Or you could just trust us and let us write the rebuttal, we have written something, and we are not on the same side on this. So we have written something that the council only changed one letter and one word.
Well, then I would propose that we then authorize Mayor Craven and Councilmember Tremblay to write the rebuttal, and then have them just sign those two, or just have their two names.
The two sign it.
Yeah.
And all of us will be signing this one, and the two will be signing the other, is that, is that a motion?
Yes.
Well, I believe that, if I could interrupt, I believe that's what we already have, right? If it's just going to be Mayor Craven and Councilmember Tremblay signing the rebuttal, then doesn't the resolution currently say that, that they would be the authors of the rebuttal?
No, it said they were the authors of the Argument Against.
Yeah.
All the signers can file the rebuttal, so now we're going to say.
Okay, so.
I would like to have it written, that it, who we're authorizing to sign, so there's no question.
Let's, we have a motion and a second, that Councilmember Tremblay and I will be those who draft and sign the rebuttal. Yes. Okay, everybody understand the motion and the second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Before we go to the next item, we had another one that I thought was going to be on this agenda, and it was the Argument Against Mr. Tremblay's, uh, uh, term limit proposal.
So those arguments, you just authorized the people to author them and file them, so they are not coming back for counsel?
Oh, okay.
So we don't see either of those for or against.
Okay, I misunderstood. Okay, so the next, now I've, oh, here's my agenda. We're down to Public Works, Item A, Lantana Street and Co. Street Intersection Resolution Establishing All-Way Stop Control. We don't have four-way stops anymore. Okay, could we have the staff report, please?
That's for when we have flying cars.
Right, or, or three-way, or five-way, not here, though. Thank you, Mayor Craven. Concerns have recently been expressed regarding the operational safety of the intersection at Co. Street and Lantana Street. To address those concerns, the Streets and Transportation Committee met on July 17th, and after discussion and prior review of staff, and, and considering that Streets and Trans Committee, it was recommended this item come to the council to consider adding stop signs on Lantana at Co. On the map, Lantana Street is shown, it's running north-south between Los Poses and Ponte Rosa, with Co. Street right about in the middle of that stretch, just west of Carmen Drive. There are currently stop signs on Co. Street approaching Lantana from either direction, vehicle is required to stop at Lantana if they're driving on Co. Couple views of a bird's eye, give some orientation, this is traveling southbound on Lantana Street at the Co. Street intersection, and from the opposite direction, this would be northbound Lantana at Co. Street. Like I mentioned, staff did perform some extensive reviews of the situation, including most current reported traffic collisions that are on file, and the evaluation of those showed that there's three traffic collisions within the last five years, and of, which did not involve driving while under the influence. All three incidents involved traffic on Co. Street failing to yield right-of-way to traffic on Lantana Street. As shown in the picture, we, what we call the ladder crosswalks, yellow crosswalks on three of the four legs of the intersection, this could create a perception among drivers, especially those that may be unfamiliar with the area as approaching, that the intersection is all-way stop controlled. As a result of this perception, drivers on Co. Street may think that drivers on Lantana Street are going to stop, which may lead the driver on Co. Street to pull out in front of oncoming traffic on Lantana. And those were the three incidents involved Co. Street traffic failing to yield the right-of-way to traffic on Lantana. Additionally, although there haven't been any reported incidents involving pedestrians, residents have also expressed concern for the safety of pedestrian crossings at this intersection. Since Lantana Street is designated a minor collector street in the city's general plan, circulation element, and also that Co. Street is not designated as a collector street, it could be argued that Co. Street does function as one, since it funnels traffic out to Carmen For these reasons, stop control is being recommended for Lantana Street at Co. Street, and that would include the installation of two new stop signs, one in each direction at, on Lantana, at the Co. Street intersection. We would also add the small sign that says "all-way" underneath the stop signs, indicating that it is indeed a all-way stop-controlled intersection. We would add the letter legend of stop, and also a stop bar on the north leg, the south leg crosswalk acts as a stop bar there. So these are additional enhancements of a stop-controlled intersection to highlight the fact that indeed traffic is required to stop there. Minimum requirement at a stop location is the placement of just a stop sign. We'd also look at where we could put advanced stop-ahead signage on, on both approaches, on Lantana approaching Co. Street, which could, which could help raise awareness of the stop signs that are there. As we always do with change, newer changed conditions for traffic control devices such as this, we place orange flags, warning flags, to highlight the, the new, or in this case, changed condition at this intersection. At the Streets and Trans Committee, it was also discussed about some further enhancements at this location, both the intersection and on the street, and I wanted to touch on that a little bit. One of them being the possibility of stop signs that have red flashing LED lights around the border, and a, a resident has provided some information about that, recommending the installation there, and, and highlighting the, the advantages of that. Those can be effective, and there's been some studies written, and the bottom line is, out of all the recommendations that are shown in these studies, that's recommended that these types of applications are for unique, specific locations that have visibility limitations, whether it's vertical or horizontal curves in the road, areas of glare due to sunlight, setting sun, rising sun. They've also been employed in areas of high dust or fog incidents, where a highlight of a stop there, especially for traffic that's not normal localized traffic. I've seen them in locations where, and one reference was given to a location here in Ventura County at a, at the base, I haven't seen those installations, but somewhere where there may be a significant volume of people that have not been there before, and where that, these could be effective. One of the agencies that studied this quite a bit is the Minnesota Department of Transportation. I just wanted to read a quote out of their traffic engineering manual, that flashing LED stop signs should only be considered for installation in situations necessitating enhanced visibility of the sign. When usage is limited to special circumstances, flashing LED signs, stop signs, may be effective safety countermeasures. So staff's opinion is that those are reserved for specific, unique locations, not locations such as a very typical, if council approves soon to be all-way stop, location that's heavily signed and appropriately marked, highlighting the fact that there is a, indeed a all-way stop sign there. The other item that was mentioned, as far as enhancements in the area regarding the speed humps, there are speed humps that were installed according to the city council's longstanding policy to address the, the request, and then, and then the approval of speed humps at different locations, and that is on Lantana Street north of the Co. Street Again, the longstanding policy for speed humps has served well in the city, most recently exercised through the installation of two speed humps on Donegan Street, where extensive discussion about the applicability of our, of our current policy, and I believe that has been substantiated, effective policy in place. We can look again, and all, that policy has specific criteria in place for when speed humps would be recommended, and we could certainly look at that, and it would be done after, if council chooses to move forward with the all-way stop here, we would install those, allow traffic to normalize on that new condition, when school is in session, typical traffic situation, then we could analyze the criteria for the speed hump policy and, and see what the outcome is there. So that concludes my report, with the suggested action being that council adopt a resolution establishing the all-way stop control at the intersection of Lantana Street and Co. Street, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Other questions?
Your Honor.
Mr. Morgan.
No questions, but I'd like to add something, a little bit to what he was in, what we did in the committee. There's a gentleman out there in the audience today that brought some things to our attention. You heard about three accidents in five years, well, there's been more than that, some weren't reported because they hit and left, agreed to agree and go, and some of those came across and went into his other side over there into cars. He had a neighbor that also verified some of this, so it wasn't exactly like it was made up. That and the children crossing, that being a children crossing and some of these things occurring, I think that, again, gives us a good indication, those lights, like he's talking about, would be good for those stop signs.
Okay, are there any questions right now? Because we do have, somebody wants to talk on this.
I have a question.
Okay, question.
The, the striped sidewalks, so we're not going to allow crossing, sidewalk crossing on the north side of Co. on Lantana?
Yellow school, right?
The, the yellow school, cool crosswalks are in place on the three legs, as they always have been.
Right.
The path to, to the school.
But people will now think, okay, they stop, can I do, they, they will cross the street there, should we? Because there's no crossing guard, right now we've got the yellow school signs sitting Right now, we've got the yellow school signs sitting out there.
Right, and it always has been legal to cross there, and will continue to be a legal place to cross.
I'm just wondering if the, if that would bring the stop sign headed south, in fact, you have to stop to their attention. Right now, without the yellow there, it makes it look like you're going through, that you can go through. To me, it looks more like a barrier.
What, can I comment with that? One of the things that you have, if you have children in the afternoons, you see that they've got one way and one, you can cross right there at the crossing on the south. But if you put them both sides, you may have people crossing on both sides of that thing, and causing more traffic congestion.
Yellow's a school crossing.
Exactly.
White's the other.
Well, then, are you going to put a white one?
That wouldn't be the intent at this point, again. With that not, we can evaluate that, again, as the, again, when a new condition is put into place, we could take a look at that afterwards.
I mean, this is a middle school, so they tend to do a little more of what they want. And it also has no crossing guard, so it's, it's the kids and the parents doing it. I just don't want that, now that we stop up there, to have it be a problem, but if you think it's okay. This has been going on for twenty-some years. This isn't brand-new, this discussion, and we've done different things, like adding the school signs and painting the crosswalks, so obviously.
Let's hear from the public.
Work in process, but.
Okay, any other questions? I have a card from Dennis Fandy.
Good evening, and most of you know me, Dennis Fandy. I live there on the corner of Co. and Lantana. Been there since eighty-three. I've been addressing this issue since eighty-three. Swede Moline, who lived across from me, had been addressing this since the late sixties, early seventies. This has been an ongoing issue, and it is not a typical residential street. Last night, while watering my roses, I had numerous cars go by at thirty-five to forty-five miles an hour, north and south, on Lantana. It is a freeway. The accidents are not always by a car, not yielding at Co., crossing Lantana. Numerous cars have spun around, gone up through my driveway, through my front yard, through the block wall, into my neighbor's yard, taking out trees. So one of the biggest issues is the speed. Again, last night, we also had three near misses. Cars squealing and screeching, trying to avoid each other because of the excessive speed. I also had one individual that had to scamper out of the way. When I was retired, I used to stand on the corner, because we lost our crossing guard, and I would block traffic, because several kids almost got run over, crossing from, across Lantana on the south side, towards Co., towards my house. So it is a high-visibility area and a high-transit area, especially since the Pleasant Valley School District closed Valley Lindo, the kids have to go over to another school. So we have not just middle school, but we also have elementary school kids. As far as the flashing red lights, if you go to Agura Hills, you'll see them in numerous places that are not low-visibility, but it does provide a lot of visibility. And the research has shown that with these LED lights, you reduce the speeds on the streets considerably, and you actually have more people that will actually physically stop at the stop sign. Once you pull the flags down, telling people that, hey, there's a new stop sign here, then they'll ignore it. But if you have these flashing LEDs, which are solar-powered, it is high-visibility day and night, and it will slow people down, and hopefully, force more people to actually stop at that stop sign. So that was why my recommendation. I've researched it. If you're taking Los Poses towards the base, they've got them in several areas, but one of them is telling people, slow down to thirty-five. And a lot of us transit there. It's not for new people. As far as people not understanding that that's not a four-way stop, they shouldn't be driving, because nowhere does it show a four-way stop. There's a little crossing guard yield sign on the center area there, and if they can't read yield and see that a green sign is not a red stop sign, they should not be driving. So for her, the latest lady, to run into my house, and it literally went through my house now, should not be driving if she doesn't know the difference.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Is there any, oh, Dennis, hang on, question?
Dennis, currently, is most of the problem coming speed-wise from headed south on Lantana?
Both directions. Yesterday, they were coming all directions, and what I do is time-speed measurement that we use in the military to, and being a military pilot, I'm used to adjusting closure rates and judging speeds. And, no, it's routine, and when they get to the speed humps, because the speeds humps are so far down, I can still watch them, and they don't even hit their brakes.
So once they pass those, it's?
The speed bumps, they go over them at thirty-five, forty-five. They're not really, they don't meet the standards of speed bumps, or humps, excuse me, there's a differentiation. What you have on Mobil is speed bumps, what you have on Lantana is speed humps. There is no standard, but they do recommend they be within a hundred feet of an intersection. Now, the furthest one up is right at the intersection, the next few are within fifty feet or less of an intersection. The one coming south is several hundreds of feet till you hit Co. So it's not about to slow down. I talked to the fire department, they have no problem with speed humps, it will not affect their trucks, it will not affect them, and that is not a normal transit area for them to go to a fire or an emergency. So it's not a normal transit area for them as well, so they have no problem with the speed humps.
Thank you.
Can I?
One more?
So, go, so, Lantana is the speed problem, not Co.
Exactly.
At Co., they're not stopping at the stop sign.
Well, there's a, yeah, a majority of people don't even stop at Co. But the biggest thing is, I'm routinely seeing cars doing thirty-five to forty-five, and upwards of fifty-five in the twenty-five zone.
And it's not just coming south, because coming north, you don't have the distance?
The other day, a kid gunned his, gunned his engine, and I watched him accelerate, still, as he hit the twenty-five, and he was still accelerating, going northbound. And it's excessive speed, a lot of them will take the turn onto Co. Street to go west on Co. I have, I have one kid that I've followed, that he actually cuts to the left and cuts the corner off, and he goes left of that little crossing sign. And I've actually followed him and taken pictures, but there's excessive speed. It's the only place, if you look at Carmen, you look at Arneal, you look at Rosewood, there's a stop between Los Poses and Ponte Rosa. There is no stop on Co. So I've actually had friends that say they take it because they don't have to stop.
Can one, can?
One more.
Where I'm, well, he's the one that's living there and knows more about than any of us. If you think that we should have the flashing signs, if we only did them on the Lantana pieces of it, versus having them on all four stops?
I would recommend all four, because, again, you do have, amazingly, a lot of traffic backs up on Co. We actually are becoming.
They're used to stopping there.
Well, yeah, the flashing red actually forces people mentally to stop even more. So according to the studies, Texas Department of Transportation, and a number of other things, twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent reduction in number of vehicles not fully stopping, and a fifty-three percent reduction in number of vehicles moving through the intersection without even slowing down. So, they do tend to work, Agura Hills uses them, a number of other communities do, in regular areas. It's not low-visibility. Bless me, Hidden Hills is a very white street, and they actually have it on Hidden Hills even.
Your Honor.
Yes.
To follow up a little bit, we asked a question about, because we want to make sure those flashing things don't bother neighbors.
Oh, and they're directional.
But one of the neighbors came in with him and said, he's right there in the corner, where he would be the one most affected. And he said, no, he wouldn't have a problem with it.
The flashing lights are directional.
We need to get on to council discussion. We really do, because it's 5:59. Uh, yes. Okay, questions of staff?
So, Mr. Clotzel, assuming we approve a four-way stop, what, if any, I don't know what I want to call it, advanced signage, would there be particularly on Lantana, preceding the intersection, to let people know that, that there's going to be a stop sign there?
Right, so the typical applications are a warning sign, a yellow warning sign, essentially it says "stop ahead." It's actually now a figure of a stop with an arrow, the national standardized symbol. And then also pavement marking could be placed, also "stop ahead."
And those could be done on both Lantana and Co., correct?
It could be.
Okay. And then, second question is, and forgive me, if, there has been no traffic study done on Lantana at this point?
Not.
In terms of the speeds? I'm reacting to Mr. Fandy's assertion relative to traffic speeds.
Right, not currently, although, I will add, in what we talked about in the Streets and Transportation Committee, the traffic sergeant from our police station was there, and in these situations, especially after an accident, they've, they put their traffic speed radar trailer out, and also performed, you know, enforcement, specific enforcement at the location. I believe the report, if I'm not mistaken, was that no citations were given for speeding during those instances.
But that's not what the traffic department does in the way of a typical study, if I understand it correct?
That's correct, right.
Okay, all right, well, I have some comments coming out, but that concludes my questions.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, open it up for comments? And a motion proposed?
Just go ahead, I'll just go ahead and start, that's okay. I'm in support of implementing the four-way stop. I would like to see advanced signage. I don't quite know what the nomenclature would be, but as Mr. Clotzel described, and I'd also like to see, with respect to, I'd like to see advanced signage, and I guess the flags would go up. I think the flashing red around the stop sign is an incremental measure that, I don't know, frankly, I would defer to staff on that. But I do think it would be prudent to go ahead and have the city traffic department perform a traffic study on Lantana with respect to the speed humps issue. So I don't know if that's appropriate in this agenda item, but.
We need to talk about our criteria, because our criteria says it needs to start with a petition from people on the street that will be affected.
Correct.
Do I remember correctly?
That's correct.
That's correct, it's request-based, which we get numerous throughout the year. It's not uncommon to get a request for speed humps, and we do have set criteria, again, that's been revalidated again at our recent experience with Donegan, and there are, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but there's a certain percentage exceeding the speed limit that needs to be met.
We have a form.
Correct.
Yes.
Plus also, volume requirements.
Right. I'm sure that one has the volume.
Well, yeah.
Because of the school.
And, things may change, once the stop signs, if approved, once the stop signs go in and traffic is normalized, we would do that study a month or two or so.
Right.
After the installation of stop signs.
If needed.
If I may, Mayor, about the flashing red LED signs, to add on there that I would suggest that, you know, we do have hundreds of intersections in the city, and to implement the installation of a measure like that, recommendation would be that that would be done based on an adopted policy or a study first, and that we would bring back to Streets and Transportation Committee that would eventually come to the city council to establish, as we did with speed humps, the criteria by which staff could then follow into the future.
So let's talk about this intersection first. Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, I've been on the Streets and Trans Committee with Mike, and we had a thorough discussion on this, along with community members there, and I support this. I think it's needed. I believe it'll help. I'm not sure that it's going to totally eradicate the issues that we had in the past, but I do think it's a step in the right direction. I think, my feeling is, as far as the LED lights, we had a discussion on that too, and we thought perhaps the best way to go about that would be to implement this first, and then take a look at it. Remember, the LED lighting are always improving, and the costs are coming down as well, so something might be in the future that we could implement at a favorable cost here, and that's certainly something that we could look at. As far as the speed bumps, we had a somewhat of a discussion on that as well, and the thought was to, let's implement this first and see how that goes, and then we can revisit that like we do all around, and many other, you know, situations that we find in the city. So, that's what, you know, was discussed, that's what I support here, and this is probably going to be an ongoing discussion here, and we'll have a lot of empirical data that we can refer back to, if in fact, this is approved.
Is that a motion to approve as recommended in the staff report?
Could be, if there's no other discussion.
I'll second with a comment.
Okay, I'll move that we approve.
With what we've done here.
This always-stop intersection.
You have, you have really, I don't see how you can get around saying that won't help slow traffic down with blinking lights and four-stop signs, and on and on and on, and stuff on the roadway. There's no reason for a study, until after we've gone through this and let's see how this works. Because, to me, you just increased the slowing-down-traffic syndrome a lot with these signs and lit-up and things on the street. That's going to slow people down.
I don't think.
And another thing, when you're talking about other, when you're talking about other parts of the city where you may, you know, do we do this everywhere? Well, this is near a school. There's a good reason why that, this is a safety factor, and not everyone has these kind of safety factors to worry about. And I think that's, we have to look at each one differently, but this is different.
Mr. Morgan, I just want to be clear, because you're talking about the light, the stop signs flashing and lit up. I don't believe that was the motion, and so since you seconded it, I want to make sure.
No, the motion is for those, those lights he's talking about, on the signs.
Would you like me to make the motion?
The motion?
Did you, are you including?
With the flashing lights?
Flashing lights on the sign?
That's not the, that wasn't.
Wait, let him say, he's making.
My motion was to adopt a resolution establishing an always-stop control at the intersection of Lantana Street and Co.
And you seconded that, so.
Well, I'm sorry.
My question is, do you want to still second it?
I heard staff's recommendation, I'm going to go.
And that is staff's recommendation?
It's for the lights too, on the stop sign.
No, it isn't. Read page two, it says, "Adopt suggested action." Adopt a resolution establishing all-way stop control at the intersection of Lantana Street and at Co.
I'm sorry, I just heard Dave, sorry.
And.
We're talking about it.
That is the motion that was made, you seconded it, are you still seconding it with?
Well, just to get it going, because we do need to have those stop signs, period, and the stuff on the, and the markings on the pavement before.
And the, okay, with staff recommendations, so, let's vote.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
And a request. I think this is long overdue, and I'm hoping that it, that it works. Are we going to get this up quickly, so it has some time before school starts?
Yes, it can be done quite quickly.
And then, I assume they'll patrol it quite well for a while and make sure we get people?
We've, we've got the implements now, we don't.
Oh, correct, no, right, right, we have stop signs, we have paint.
Perfect, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We have a study session and a closed session that we need to go to before we come back at 7:30. I'll ask the city attorney to read the conditions under which we'll be going into closed session.
Yes, we just have one closed session. It's a conference with real property negotiator. The authority is Government Code Section 549, 56.8. The properties are listed by address in the agenda. The negotiators are the city manager and others, as noted in the agenda. The negotiating parties are Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, under negotiation or price and terms of payment.
We will recess and be back at 7:30. Stuff on the Navy base. Uh, Mrs. McDonald, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please rise and join us, with your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we have a presentation on Naval Base Ventura County Economic Impact Assessment Update. Could we have the report, please, Amanda?
Hi. Well, good evening, Mayor Craven, and members of the City Council, and Mr. Norman. Again, for the record, my name is Amanda Fagan, and I am the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. Um, thank you so much for the invitation this evening to share the results of our economic impact assessment with all of you, and thank you for your continued support for the naval base and all of our personnel. Um, before I get started, I, I feel like, uh, I, I should be giving a medal to you, Mayor Craven, for the more than eight hours of groundwater allocation discussions today.
And now being here.
Having survived a portion of that myself today.
But you were there too.
Um, I, I appreciate especially you being here. Um, so I'll be brief this evening, but I will just share with you some of the results and highlights of our economic impact assessment. Uh, the previous economic impact assessment for Naval Base Ventura County was completed in 2012, based on fiscal year 2010 data. Uh, this current economic impact assessment update is based on fiscal year 2015 data. There is a little bit of a lag in the preparation of the report, because it, um, is a rather Herculean effort to collect all of the personnel and expenditures data from across all of our many tenant commands, approximately eighty tenant commands across the base. Um, so we did collect that personnel and expenditures data, and we worked with a consultant team, an economist, to, um, develop the report and associated, um, materials that we can share with, with all of you and with the public, uh, that document, uh, our economic impact, as well as, um, history, mission, and other information about the base. Um, the economic impact assessment is focused on a region of influence, and for this study, that region of influence is Ventura County. We do have additional personnel who live outside of the county, and so, um, they're included in the personnel counts that I'll share with you on the next slide, um, but the total economic benefit may extend even beyond, um, the numbers that we'll share with you this evening. So, the economic impact assessment found more than $2 billion total annual economic impact generated within the region of influence of Ventura County. Um, the economic impact assessment also identified over 20,000 total direct, indirect, and induced jobs, uh, associated with Naval Base Ventura County. More than 12,000 of those jobs are military, civilian, and contractor personnel who reside within Ventura County, and approximately 6,600 jobs that are stimulated in Ventura County by Navy operations, personnel spending, and other spending within the county. Um, we also have around 2,000 additional personnel, um, who work at the base, but who reside in either neighboring counties, or some of those are also, um, reservists who reside in other communities, but, but come here regularly to visit, um, for training and operational activities. Um, some of the other highlights of the economic impact assessment include, um, $1.4 billion in total industry output, uh, $710 million in total direct annual payroll, and $77 million in state and local taxes within Ventura County. The economic impact assessment also included, the, the results of that, um, included, uh, three brochures that, um, I have shared with each of you this evening. Uh, one is sort of highlights of the economic aspects specifically. Um, the second is, um, we call it Partners for a Compatible Future, and this includes information about, uh, our history and mission, of course, those economic highlights, areas of operation, uh, some of the challenges to our mission, and, uh, also information about community partnerships. And then finally, we have a, a little bit more meaty brochure, that also includes information about, um, about the base and our economic impact. Uh, so those are good sources, um, of information about the base, um, for use in planning documents that the city might be doing, or, or other, other needs. Uh, so with that, I promised I would keep it brief, I'm happy to answer any questions about the economic impact assessment. Um, I will also mention, before I forget, um, the economic impact assessment is focused just on the Navy activities within Ventura County. It does not include the Channel Islands Air National Guard Base. Um, the Air Force conducts its own economic impact assessment using its own guidance. So, so this is just focused on the sort of Navy side of the house, and the Channel Islands Air National Guard Base would have additional impact, um, to the county as well. Uh, and the, let's see, oh, I spent a lot of time in groundwater meetings today, so forgive me for...
It's hard to change gears, isn't it?
Really hard to shift. Um, but the, um, I guess, one more little, um, piece of information, just for a matter of perspective. When you think about that big, $2 billion economic impact number, um, for a bit of perspective, that is roughly on par with the total economic impact of the, um, entire ag industry within Ventura County. Um, so if you think about those two sort of major, uh, legs of the stool supporting our economy here in Ventura County, um, just for a bit of perspective. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Kildee.
Yeah, on the, um, $2 billion of economic activity, does that number stay, um, pretty much consistent, or does it go up and down, or how's...
The, this current update did reflect a, a fairly small increase in the total economic activity compared to the 2012 update. Um, I actually would expect, if we were, I think if we were to do the study now, based on current expenditures, and even, um, in a couple more years, based on, on those expenditures, I would actually expect to see a fairly significant increase. Uh, we are experiencing a fair amount of growth at the base, both through, um, expansion of our current missions, as well as, um, new missions that are coming to the installation. Uh, for example, the, um, United States Coast Guard Search and Rescue Mission, uh, has relocated from, uh, Los Angeles International Airport, um, to, um, Point Mugu. There, two of those helicopters and the associated personnel are already here, um, but they didn't get here until after fiscal year 2015, so those personnel already wouldn't be counted here. Um, and then they're building a new, the Coast Guard is also building a new hangar at Point Mugu, um, so that will bring two more aircraft and associated personnel. So, we already know about that growth. Um, the, um, E2 Hawkeye Community, those four squadrons are all in the process of converting from the Charlie Model to the Delta, and when they make that conversion here in a couple years, they'll each add an additional aircraft to, to those squadrons, which will come with its own, uh, personnel requirements as well. So, we are, um, seeing, uh, known and additional emerging growth happening at the base, and so these, these numbers I would expect only to, to increase. Um, and that, um, that decrease, or the, the slight increase in, uh, from 2010, fiscal year 2010, to fiscal year 2015, um, actually occurred even despite the loss of, um, one of the CB battalions at Port Wenimi, so we still saw a, a bump in the economic activity, even though the personnel numbers, um, were down a little bit from the previous.
Is the civilian employment, uh, remaining steady, or is that, uh, gaining a little bit, or is it declining, or did you know...
We are also seeing increases in, in civilian personnel and contractors. Uh, for example, the, um, Naval Surface Warfare Center, Port Wenimi Division, uh, was authorized, I think it's 500 new, um, personnel authorizations this last year, um, so they're seeing an increase. And one thing to keep in mind about our personnel counts too, is that only about a third of our personnel are active-duty military. The other two-thirds are civilians and contractors. Um, so those are folks who, who live in, in our communities, and who, and, and even of the military personnel, only about a third of them live on base. So, so the vast majority of our personnel are, are residents of our, our cities here in Ventura County.
And we enjoy those personnel that are in Navy housing, but in Camarillo.
Ask a question.
Mr. Morgan.
Is that one of the new frigates right there?
I, I believe that's, uh, one of the, the LCS.
We have one of those here?
Uh, not homeported here, but, um, they do come here fairly regularly as a transient ship. Our, um, Naval Surface Warfare Center, Port Wenimi Division Personnel Support, uh, provide engineering support to those ships, and so they'll, they'll come here, and our engineers, um, and scientists will, um, will get on and, and help that ship before it goes underway.
Maybe someday, we'll get one of those too. That's one, that's a brand-new frigate.
The LCS means littoral combat ships, and the littoral is the brown water, so they're close to shore.
I understand, I'm just saying, I'm hope, that's a beautiful ship, and, uh, I hadn't never seen that out there, that's why I asked, is it here yet? It's not.
That's actually, they're, they're not homeported here, but that is a photo of an LCS in our port, so they do, they do visit as transients.
Okay, transients, okay.
Um, and then one last little thing, a quick invitation to the, um, Point Mugu Surf Contest. Um, it will be occurring this year on August 25th and 26th. It is open to the public, both for competitors, uh, as well as for spectators. There'll be music and activities, um, and we would definitely encourage all of you and the public to join us, uh, for that fun event. Um, and incidentally, um, why I love it so much is that it does implement one of the strategies of the Joint Land Use Study, um, which identified a, a concern about, um, folks wanting to access our amazing surf break, so, um, so this is, uh, um, also implementing the Joint Land Use Study strategies as well.
Question, Charlotte.
Mr. Morgan.
You know where the old Officers Club was?
Yes.
Is that where the surfing goes on, right there?
Uh, it's just to the, sort of west or north of that.
To the west a little more?
It's, so, it's behind some of the existing buildings, it's called Surfer's Point, so where you're thinking of is, is Family Beach, and then a little further to the west, uh, is where the actual surf contest occurs.
And then all those seals that you have here in this picture are down there in that place, just down the way to the east of that, they'll hang out there, uh-huh?
Yes.
I have a friend that used to, it's one of, I shouldn't say this publicly, but I had a friend that was a pretty avid surfer, unfortunately, his dad was military, so I got to go out there quite often, and it's, shall we say, it's a, a very, um...
Challenging.
You know, it's a, it's a very opportunistic and a very good place to surf, and I'll leave it at that, so...
I like to go out and take pictures of the waves, but I, you won't find me in them.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is public comments.
We used to jump.
I have one card from Terry Bray. And Terry, I know you've been here before, so I don't need to explain the rules a whole lot, and I know you know we, that you have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Terry Bray, Camarillo, California, three items. Uh, the street renaming of the Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets Drive is not needed. The current street name brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. Also, the changing of the street name directly financially impacts merchants who have printed materials and/or websites that reflect the current street name.
Excuse me, but this, isn't this an agenda item? Just, okay, so this is on the agenda, it's gonna be considered later this evening, if you wanna discuss it then.
Okay.
Typically, this is for items that are not on the agenda right now.
And I stand corrected, I didn't see it on the agenda, I'm sorry. Um, basically, I'm not able to stay after public comment, so can I just finish my one sentence? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, that would be fine.
I think that's fine, it was on the earlier agenda, I believe.
Yeah, we didn't get to it, though.
We didn't get to it, so, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I read, earlier agenda, so I figured it was already dealt with.
So she, she can address it now, then?
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, so if you change the name of the street, you would be sticking all the merchants with the expense to accommodate the change. Number two, I have again supplied Comprehensive Housing Services, CHS, with contractor cost estimates accommodating the renovation grant process. This makes a total of seven contractor cost estimates, the normal amount is three. Because you are requiring CHS to reconstruct non-compliant construction performed by Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County, $8,000, or one-third of the total grant, is being used, causing other needed renovations to remain that I'm not able to afford. It's wrong for you to force me to use my low-income grant to fix $8,000 problem that you created. Three, the Old Town Firehouse. Both the city attorney, Brian Perick, and Community Development Assistant Director David Mo, publicly stated on Cameron in the newspaper that community development block grant funds are not allowed per HUD to be used to renovate the firehouse. Mr. Perick and Mr. Mo are partially wrong. According to Playing by the Rules Handbook, produced by HUD, that guides the city's CDBG money, on paragraph 6.6, Historic Preservation, located in Chapter 6-9, as long as there are not violations of the Historic Preservation Act, related laws, executive orders, CDBG funds can be used to preserve historic buildings and properties that are registered with the federal government as a building of historic significance. To register the firehouse as historical landmark, the city only needs to nominate the firehouse to the Secretary of the Interior. The firehouse is located in Old Town, built in 1951. Camarillo became a city in 64. The firehouse was operational till 95. It is flanked by the Monumental Church, built by the founder of the city, Adolfo Camarillo, and flanked by the original city cemetery, now Dizdar Park. The firehouse is older than the city itself. Is it a historical? I would say it's indisputable. Get federal designation, use the $300,000 of CDBG money that you've accumulated, and get it renovated or sold, or turn it in to the official Camarillo Gift Shop and Historical Archives. It would be a tourist attraction, make an income, enhance Old Town, and literally be walking distance from the metro station and the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only card I had. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll go on to departmental items. A, Camarillo Train Station Parking Lot Time Restrictions.
I believe we wanna go to the Sanitary District Public Hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should've had that list out.
Let's, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you're okay, let's go ahead and reopen the Sanitary District Board Meeting. Uh, and this is item on the agenda is item eight, uh, under public hearings, compensation of board members' CSD ordinance, and I believe we, it's appropriate to have a staff report first, and then open the, open the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, this evening we'll be talking about, um, on this agenda for Camp San, and also on the City Council agenda, um, a possible increase in compensation for the CSD Board, which is the City Council, and then the City Council proper. Um, in terms of both, uh, boards, um, both boards can only take action to increase compensation for the board during a general election period, a general municipal election, which is every two years. However, such an increase is only operative after the election and in the following year. So, for the CSD, the laws that operate compensation for the CSD are different than they are for the City Council, and so I'm going to go through only those laws that pertain to the CSD at this time, and then, when the other agenda item comes up, I'll be discussing those that are applicable to the City Council. So, in terms of state law, for, uh, for CSD Board members, it's, uh, the, the laws involved are with the Health and Safety Code and with the Water Code. And basically, both these codes regulate how much, uh, how many dollars per day for each day's attendance at a meeting the board can be compensated. And for Health and Safety Code Section, it states that subject to subdivision B, each of the members of the board shall receive compensation in an amount not to exceed $100 per day for each day's attendance at meetings of the board, or for each day's service rendered as a director by request of the board, not exceeding a total of six days in any calendar month, together with any expenses incident thereto. And then there's section B of this, uh, Health and Code Safety Section, the district board by ordinance adopted pursuant to Chapter Two of the, of Division 10 of the Water Code, may increase the compensation received by board members above the amount of $100 per day. The Water Cor, the Water Code also provides that, in any ordinance adopted pursuant to this chapter, to increase the amount of compensation, which may be received by members of the governing board of a water district above the amount of $100 per day... Board of a water district above the amount of $100 per day. The increase may not exceed an amount equal to 5% each calendar year, following the operative date of the last adjustment of the compensation which is received when the ordinance is adopted. No ordinance adopted pursuant to this chapter shall authorize compensation for more than a total of 10 days in any calendar month. Current compensation of the Board members is set at $170.65 for each day of service, which, as we currently meet, is two days per month. The proposed ordinance would increase Board member compensation by 5%, which is $8.53, to a total of $179.18 for each day of service, not to exceed 10 days in a calendar month. The Board cannot set, cannot set compensation above 5%, but it can certainly set it lower. And that concludes staff's report.
Any questions? Pardon? Oh, I, I'm sorry. No, I'm.
Perhaps I can ask?
I've been in a lot of meetings today and I apologize. I totally apologize.
You've had a long day with Fox Canyon GMA. Are there any questions by Board members of the City Manager, Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, as I understand this, this will go in effect after the next election. Is that right?
That's correct. It's going to go into effect January 1st.
No? I'm sorry.
No, it's going to go into effect 60 days after adoption. For the CSD, that other provision applies only to the City Council.
Oh, so the CSD one potentially will go in effect within 60 days of this date?
No, because you'll adopt it at our next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
It'll be August 22nd and then sixty.
Okay, 60 days after that.
Actually, it will be after the election, what it sounds like.
November 1st?
September, October, yeah, it's probably going to be after.
Or right before, yeah.
Okay.
Are there, before we go to public hearing, are there other questions from Board members of staff? Ms. McDonald?
See if my math is right, did anybody calculate what increase that would be to the Board members, considering we meet twice a month? Anybody done it?
Sixteen, seventeen dollars and six cents?
I have eighteen forty-two, but that's why, but I guess what I'm after is under twenty dollars.
Eighty-five-three cents for each meeting.
Each meeting, yeah. Well, I did it the other way, going times and time. Anyway, I guess it's under $20 would be a safe.
Nineteen oh six, am I right on that?
Oh, you're close to.
Seventeen oh six, sorry, too high, seventeen oh six.
I think I did it the other way. Anyway, doesn't matter. So it's under $20 is the answer. For some reason, I don't have the agenda thing in here.
It's, it's under departmental?
Oh, it's back in the back.
Back in the back.
Oh, I went back to Camp San.
It's under public hearing.
It's in public, it's in public.
I thought I remembered reading it, but when I went back to Camp San, it was missing. There you go. Okay.
All right, are there any other questions by Directors of Staff before I open the public hearing? All right, let me open the public hearing. Do we have any, anyone who wishes to testify as to this matter from the public? Madam Clark, do we have any cards? All right, at this point then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to the Board of Directors for further, for further discussion and deliberation. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Mr. Kildee?
I support this. I think it's less than $20 a month and we will not be almost till after the next election. And I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Morgan?
It's less than $18 a month, let's get it straight.
Well, that's less than $20.
Less than $18 a month. And I think from what, like you say, it's going to go to the next Board anyway. And that cost of living is more than what we're going to get here, just so you know. And so I think I'm going to go along with this.
Other comments, Mrs. Craven, Ms. McDonald? All right, I have my own personal view on this and I'll go ahead and indicate it at this point. I can't support this. I think the Board already receives adequate compensation. This is inherently a public service duty that we do and I just, I can't in good conscience support an increase. So I'll be voting, the Board, if the Board of Directors approves this, I'll be voting in opposition. Do I have a motion?
No, I was going to make one comment because it was stated that it's for up to six days of service, I think, and something, that's in the Health and Safety Code and the Water Code allows up to 10 days. Hang on. Excuse me. A lot of special districts pay this amount to their directors who are attending conferences by our policy and something we adopted, I don't know if it was a resolution or what, but this only applies to our regular meetings. Or it could be a special meeting, but not to any other things that we attend.
It's only meetings, as I understand it, correct?
For, for us.
Right.
I think, I get her point.
Meetings of the Board, excuse me.
We do other things besides just the meetings. We go education and pick up at.
No, I just meant that special, a lot of special districts, Regional San and others, many others, almost all the others, pay their directors to go to conferences. And we pay expenses, but we don't pay a stipend to attend. I was just getting at that part.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion?
I think it's a request to the reading of the title.
I'll take that as a request to read the title. It's CSD Ordinance Number 91, an ordinance of the Camarillo Sanitary District, setting Board member compensation.
I'll move to Ray further reading and introduce the CSD ordinance, setting the Board members' compensation.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other commentary? Motion second, please vote.
Mine.
Mr. Morgan? And that is adopted on a three to two vote, Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Tremblay dissenting. Let's see, that, I believe, that concludes all of the business before Camarillo Sanitary District, and I'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting.
Okay. We'll continue with the Camarillo City Council meeting, and at this time, we're going to departmental items. The first one is Camarillo Train Station Parking Lot Time Restrictions. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. We got a picture on the screen of the Camarillo Train Station. The parking lot's being made up of two sections, the west parking lot on what we call the Lewis side, the east parking lot on the Dawson side. Long-term parking has become a concern at the Camarillo Train Station with vehicles being parked, stored, abandoned, or used as shelter. City Council, previous study session considered parking issues here, both back in January and then even tonight, a study session to look at proposed options to implement parking restrictions that could help address this concern of long-term parking of vehicles. Couple photos here showing the parking lots, the west parking lot looking north, section underneath the 101 Overpass, north of the 101 Overpass on the west parking lot, another section there, some of the larger vehicles parked, sometimes for long periods of time. And then we have the east parking lot, which is also concerns with large vehicles parked, again, for a long time or often used as shelter. So in study session, the concept of implementing time-restricted parking was discussed. And the requirement would be to implement anything of restrictions on these lots, since they are owned by the Ventura County Transportation Commission, is approval of implementing those restrictions would be required by VCTC. And the item before you tonight, the action is requesting, directing the City Manager to seek authority from VCTC, allowing the City Council to implement parking restrictions at the, at the Camarillo Train Station, as needs dictate. The time-restricted parking options would be a new practice at the, at the train station, so this would allow some flexibility to consider various scenarios of time restrictions. We initially started looking at what's shown here on the screen is possibly one section on the west side, underneath the 101 in south, is a 24-hour maximum. These spaces are, you know, intended for, you know, being closest to the platform for commuter traffic and then allowing the rest of the parking lot, both sides could be designated as 72-hour maximum, again, continuing to allow longer-term parking, but also put a limit to address the issue of longer-term parking in some instances that are becoming an issue. So this action then would allow the City Manager to seek broader authority from VCTC to allow Council then to adopt and implement parking restrictions as future needs dictate. That concludes my report. And I actually would like to clarify the suggested action. I would recommend that we take out the timed section of that and leave it as, direct the City Manager to seek VCTC authority, allowing the City Council to implement parking restrictions at the Camarillo Train Station, as needs dictate, just in case there are other restrictions that would be deemed appropriate, such as an oversized vehicle and those kinds of things that we could also explore as alternative scenarios.
Any questions? What are the wishes?
Your Honor, the City Manager to seek VCTC authority, allowing the City Council to implement parking restrictions at the Camarillo Train Station, as needs dictate.
So motion is second, the further discussion?
Just one little thing. So everybody notes, we had a long session on this, a study session on this, so the public knows we're just not here okaying this. But we had a lot of talk about this issue and how to treat it, and it's kind of complicated.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Excuse me. Item B, an ordinance adjusting the compensation for members of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Currently, the salary for each Council member is $1,425 per month. Government Code Section 36.516A establishes a general schedule of permissible salary levels for City Council members of general law cities such as Camarillo. Government Code Section 36.516A4 allows for increases in Council member salary, provided the increase is adopted by ordinance, and the amount of additional compensation does not exceed an amount equal to 5% for each calendar year from the date of the last adjustment. Under Ordinance Number 1125, Council member salary was last increased by 1.5% on January 1st, 2017, and again on January 1st, 2018. Council member salaries may again be increased, as proposed, in this ordinance by 5%, an increase of $71 monthly, for a total of $1,496 a month effective January 1st, 2019, and by 5% an increase of $75 monthly, for a total of $1,571 per month effective January 1st, 2020. As explained previously, under the, similar item with CSD, the City Council can only take action to increase City Council salaries during a municipal election year. And so we have a, an ordinance that is effective for the following two years, 2019 and 2020, in which you can determine compensation increases for both those years. And of course, the, they would be effective January 1st of 2019 and 2020.
And let me just ask a question first. That is an up to, we don't necessarily have.
That's right. That's an up to, you can't go beyond 5%, but you can certainly adopt something less than.
Which is what we did last time.
Which is what you did last time.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for questions first. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Kildee?
Does anybody know what the CPI is? I know, I think we used, do we use the LA rate?
I don't know exactly, but I believe it's around 3%.
How much?
Around 3%.
That's usually, yeah. That's usually kind of a, as I've been doing my research, it's somewhere around the 2.5 to 3% over, it's been over a number of years. Is that, has that been your experience as well? Okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. McDonald?
What was the percentage that our employees received as a raise this year?
2% overall.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Are there any other questions? I'm sorry, I should have asked. Okay, let's open it up for discussion.
Want me to start?
Sure.
I'd recommend that we do it. We gave our employees and that's 2%.
One year and both years?
Both, you know.
2% per year.
One year and 2% the next? Just so everybody understands what we're talking about.
Your Honor?
Mr. Morgan?
I had the same thing written down here. Why don't you, we go any higher than employees? 2% makes a difference, I mean, makes it fair.
Any other comments, any motion, any discussion?
Just, just a comment, Madam Mayor, for the same reasons I gave on the Camarillo Sanitary District item, I can't support the, I can't support an increase and I'll, I'll vote against it.
Okay. Any other?
I guess I will make the comment that I don't go so far as in my disagreement being as Mr. Tremblay does, because while this is obviously a volunteer, a part-time position, we spend an awful lot of time.
Lot of time.
At this job. So, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't be.
My six and a half hours before I got here today.
Yeah, you've worked more than an eight-hour day today, that's for sure.
Ventura, three times a month from different committees I have to go to.
So, anyone who thinks so, they just sit up here, you know, twice a month, no, no, no. But having said that, I think that where we are is probably fine. I think what I could go for would be 1% and then 1%, which would be equal to 2 when we're done. But I, I don't know that we need to do anything, to tell you the truth.
So you are suggesting nothing to 1% and then the following, starting January 1st of next year, with another 1% the following year?
Which would then equal 2 after.
Which would equal 2.
After two years.
In relation to the 2 that our employees got this year, but we don't know what they'll get next year.
That's correct.
And Mr. Kildee is suggesting 2% starting January 1st next year, followed by 2% the following year?
That's correct.
Okay. So we got discussion on 2. Well, is there a motion? We, and we have nothing. I mean, that's the third.
It's a reading of the title.
We got three of us.
I don't know if, do we need to vote first on which one we're going to vote?
No, I thought we might talk about it a bit, but we can talk about them later. So I'll request a reading of the title.
Well, the ordinance as it's written.
We don't know what to have unless we talk about it, is my theory, is that?
Okay, I can read the title and then you're going to talk about it and make a decision of what goes in the ordinance, is that?
That's apparently what they want to do.
Okay, well, I do what I'm told. It's Ordinance Number 1155, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, amending Section 2.08.040 of the Camarillo Municipal Code relating to the compensation of City Council members.
Okay, and it has a number in here, but we can, we can go less than that, so let's have some discussion.
I'll start it off and recommend that we do the 2% each year, and that is consistent, what we do with our employees here. If you look at what the CPI is, it's under what the CPI is here, and I think it's, would be something that I could support, the 2% each year.
Your Honor, I can second that, but I want to make some comments. Like, I mentioned it offhand. Our Air Quality Board, what was the other one? Air Quali, and the, anyway, I go to three of them in Ventura every month. That's, you know, that's 30 miles almost every month, just going back and forth in time. I start counting all the time we're there in the meetings. Now, that's just those meetings. There are many out here too, we attend. And so, you know, I think that at least going along with the, probably cost of living or close to it, is fair.
I'm just going back to the first of the year. I haven't kept this up, but I did start and I went for several months. And I kept track of the, I guess it was just in January, I spent the first week 12 hours, second week 29 hours, third week 5 hours. 29 hours, third week 5 hours, fourth week 25 hours. It goes like that every once in a while, every, and then when you get to May and June, every week is up in the 20-plus hours. So there are a lot of hours.
And all the time you take to get ready for all those meetings.
And that, that doesn't, and then, yeah, then it was 5 hours and 18 hours, 10 hours, 26 hours, and I'm up to March 4th, 13 and a half hours, 9 hours, 13 hours. It takes a lot of time just for our city council duties and special meetings. And then in addition to that, you have to read packets, and a lot of times, the packets for the additional meetings are just as thick as a city council member packet.
And meetings where we're asked to speak, which is several. And so there's so much time in this, it's unbelievable.
I, I can support, if that was a motion, I can support the motion.
There was a motion, I think we did get a second. I think you have.
I was second.
We have other comments.
Want to clarify the motion in the second first, before my comment? Okay.
My motion was 2% starting January 1st and another 2% starting the following January 1st, as I understood it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Kildee?
Yes, that's correct.
And that was what, the understanding of the second?
That's the understanding.
I'm always wanting to clarify the second now. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted some clarity on that. Yeah, in no way am I minimizing or belittling the number of hours that we all spend. Goodness knows.
You spend a lot.
I spend an awful lot. I just come at this from a different mindset, so respectfully. Thanks.
So what we need to do now is fill in some blanks in the ordinance that are currently, in Section 1B, it says 5%. So if the proposal, 2% would go in there. And then, I did this by longhand, so somebody should check me, but I believe that the, since the current salary is 1425 a month, I believe a 2% increase on that is $28.50 a month. So let's start with that one. Can somebody check that? Is that right? Okay. I guess I remember some math from third grade. Okay, so 2850 plus 1425 is 1,453.50, 1,453.50. So that would go under Section 2 instead of the 1,496. And then I determined 2% of 1,453.50 would be $29.06. Is that right? 7? Hmm, okay, I got 6. I had 1,453. Oh, I see why you did that. Well, you went, you extended out further than I did. Okay, 2907. So then we take 2907 and we add that to 1,453.50, we would get the number, which would be in Section 3, which would be 1,482.57. So that would be the amended ordinance, as I understood what the council was saying that you're, that is before the council now for a vote.
Okay, everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yep.
Motion carries 3-2 with Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Tremblay dissenting. That finishes this part of the agenda. We will now go back to Public Works. Item B, street renaming, Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets Drive. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. This item before you is to consider adopting a resolution that would rename Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets Drive. As shown on the map, Factory Stores Drive, existing street, extends from Ventura Boulevard South and then past Camrio Center Drive to the cul-de-sac section on the south end. To improve driver guidance to the Camrio Premium Outlet Center and to eliminate the obsolete retail industry name of Factory Stores, the Premium Outlets Management Company, Simon Company, has requested that the city rename Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets Drive. The street renaming concept has been reviewed by staff and preliminary, and reviewed and preliminary they approved also by the fire and police departments. There is only one affected property with an actual address on Factory Stores Drive, and that is on the cul-de-sac portion, and it is the building down here, back off of Factory Stores Drive, and that building is currently vacant. Staff has reached out to and is continuing to attempt to reach the owner to confirm that they are amenable with the street name change. There are no other addresses that are Factory Stores Drive street name. The other buildings out here that have frontage on Factory Stores Drive, their addresses are Camrio Center Drive, and would not be affected. If there is an issue with the cul-de-sac portion, the, we, this action by council could allow the change of the street name between Ventura Boulevard and Camrio Center Drive to Premium Outlets Drive and retaining Factory Stores Drive on the south part of the cul-de-sac, not the ideal situation, but that could accomplish the same thing with identifying this section of street adjacent to the Premium Outlets Center as Premium Outlets Drive. There are approximately 15 existing street name signs that would require replacement to effect this change, and again, the item before you is to adopt a resolution renaming Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets Drive, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Kildee?
Dave, could you maybe talk a little bit about the policy and who pays for this? And whether or not we've ever done this with the name change previously within the city?
Correct. So. Can handle that question. Council has previous practice in this regard. Back on September 26, 2007, the, the American Legion Post 741 requested that Nalora Street, next to their building, be renamed American Legion Way, or renamed Veterans Way, Veterans Way. And the city picked up the cost for that, and, and that was an action taken in 2007.
How much did that cost?
I, I think it was, it was nominal. It was only a couple hundred bucks at the most.
And Dave, my understanding, it's about some $600 to do this. What's the figure that we?
No, we, our real rough estimate is a hundred or maybe $200 per sign location. It depends if a new post is needed. Most of them will just require a replacement of the, what we call the blade, the street name sign blade, which we actually produce those in-house. We have materials available. It's relatively nominal cost, but we did, you know, identify probably the maximum estimate of $3,000 total. There are some larger-sized signs that we would look at changing out also.
The one over on, that overhangs Ventura Boulevard would be more, wouldn't it?
I was thinking.
It's a larger sign.
Correct, yes. Yes, the larger one. The street, and there's a, I believe, a median street name sign also.
Yes.
Those blades are a little bit bigger, a little bit more costly, but it, it's the matter of having approximately 15 of them. It adds up a little bit more.
Any other questions? Mrs. McDonald.
This is not the first time this request has been made of the city.
That's correct.
Did anyone do any research as to the last time? And I'm thinking of, this is, might be the third time. Can, did you look up that history and the reasons why we didn't do it last time?
I don't have that information, but I do know that it has been a request that's been on the table, so to speak.
Okay. And, may I keep going?
Certainly.
We talk about the directionals, or the street address signs. Are there directional signs, or are, is there indeed directional material that people would have to reprint because of this?
So, and actually, maybe the manager from the Premium Outlet Center is here and has submitted a speaker card, Mr. John Best, could, could all speak to specifically for the outlets, or the Premium Outlet Center. As I mentioned, as far as any other business or, or location there with an address, there isn't any, other than the one that's currently vacant. So, you know, from what we know, we feel that there would, would be not any or very minimal impact in that regard.
And are there any other expenses other than the street signs, cost to redo, mapping, GIS systems? With the fire department, obviously, fire and police have to change stuff in order to be dispatched to the right street.
Right, there would be changes necessary there. Again, it's estimated to be very nominal.
So you have done a bit of a study to know that it's a nominal? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a card from John Best. And Mr. Best, we limit you to three minutes.
Perfect. Good evening. So I submitted a letter ahead of time, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read, but the, the primary reason that we're, we're submitting this request is because there's a bit of a mismatch for directional signage around Camrio. Some direct people to Factory Stores Drive, some of the directional signage directs people to the outlet center. And we, we just want to have a consistent message. We have a lot of customers that come where English is not their first language. Driving on, on the correct side or on our side of the road is not necessarily, it doesn't come natural to them. So if we can make their path of travel as seamless as possible and, and not have to try and decipher those directional signs as they're, as they're traveling in, that would be, would be fantastic, and then we put a consistent message forward. That being said, I think the Camrio Premium Outlets is a major attraction for the city of Camrio, similar to Old Town, similar to the Ranch House, and all of those attractions have directional signage. If Old Town is going through a, a change and they needed to adjust their name, or their signage was obsolete, or what have you, I, I think, I think it'd be no problem to get that signage adjusted. We're not going to go to those tenants, we're not going to go to the people, or the, the stores along Ventura Boulevard there and ask them to, to pay their, their portion of that signage. I think we also contribute significantly to, as far as taxes go, to the city. That being said, that allows the city to do a lot of other items in and around, and we have yet to oppose any of those items that, that are able to be accomplished because of some of those tax dollars that we, we provide. Further, the hotels and restaurants in and around Camrio benefit from, from some of our traffic. We have the, the Hotel and Tourism Association, they have a kiosk on property to help direct customers out and about throughout the city, so that, that the hotels and restaurants and other venues can benefit from our traffic. For those reasons, I think, I think it's in everybody's best interest to, to make that path of travel and that visit to Camrio and the Premium Outlets as easy as possible. Thank you.
Can I ask one question, Your Honor?
Certainly. Mr. Morgan?
You mentioned "we." Who's "we"?
"We"? In what context? Sorry.
Well, you mentioned, "we" wanted to see this. Who, who is "we"?
The, the Camrio Premium Outlets. So.
No, I meant.
Simon Property Group and then, and the tenants as well.
No, I meant, you indicated that this is what, "we," as a, are you part of a group?
He's the manager.
He's the manager of the center.
I'm the mall manager, yep.
Okay.
So I'm, so "we" meaning the outlets.
Outlets, oh, the whole outlets, okay.
The, the ownership, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Best. There was a non-verbal card or letter submitted by Mrs. Williams, and I have circulated that among the council members. Okay.
Can I ask one more question of staff?
Yes.
It was brought up about what has happened when we add directional signs, et cetera, with, with other attractions in town. And, and by the way, I, the last I heard was that the Premium Outlet malls is the number one tourist attraction in Ventura County, as far as the number of people who go there. So that is quite a, a big thing and does bring in a lot of money. But just to clarify, when we allowed the Ranch Foundation to add all that signage all over town about the ranch, who paid for all of those? We did. Oh, the redevelopment agency?
So I have a feeling it was handled through our redevelopment agency.
I think it was, a lot of them, the ones up in other parts of town were done after redevelopment was over.
Yes, that was. It was us.
The ones on Adolfo.
I know the city, the city designed those signs.
Yeah, the ones on Adolfo.
So we, the city paid for it versus the foundation?
That's right.
Right.
Okay. It's just that getting down to it being equal.
The one the sign, the foundation had to pay for was the one on the freeway.
Adolfo, or the historical.
Yeah.
Designated.
Yeah. Caltrans approved that one, but they had to pay for it.
Maybe that's what I was.
Counsel, on a, on a general level, I think there's a tremendous value in the public convenience of getting people safely and directly to their destinations when they come into town, including, you know, the ranch and the outlet malls. I think Mr. Best's comments are, are right on point. We want travelers to be able to safely and easily find their destinations.
I usually let all of you talk and then I talk, which is our, what our policy states, but I want to chime in on something. And I've noticed, too, that we have different names in different places in our directional signs, outlet centers, factory stores, and that kind of thing. I have always said that city signage, or any street signage, or road signage, is directed for people who know where they're going. It's certainly not designed for people from out of the area. You don't know how many times I've gone to places and I've seen signs like that, and I'm looking, oh, there are more outlet stores. I want to go to that other center, too. This one's premium stores, this one's factory stores, this one might just be the outlet center. So I'd be looking for, as they have in Barstow, three of them. And, and, and other places, too. There's a place called Berkshire Run, Michigan, that's got five of them. But I, I just think that to be consistent, it would be good to have everything saying the same thing, wherever it is, especially if we put it up. But in addition to that, I don't object to renaming this street.
All right.
So I, I didn't mean to close conversation, I just wanted to get my two bits in at one, for one point, for one time. I saw a hand down there, Mr. Tremblay.
Do you want your two bits first?
I'll, I'll go first. Yeah, the outlets are a major competitor for me. They have been since the first day that they arrived in town. I have to say, though, that in the industry, there's really no such thing as a factory store, and we've never really been able to define what a factory store is. Does that mean that they're manufacturing things in their factory? Well, they're not doing that. So it is a moniker that has, they outlived its usefulness, if in fact it ever, it ever, people could ever define it, and I was never able to define that. I did have a conversation with the city manager about having them pay for that, but if we do that, my understanding, it would be inconsistent with what we have done in past practices. I don't think this is going to decrease or increase their sales one bit. What it might do is make it a little bit more understandable for where people want to go, and if we start talking about traffic on the 101 and traffic in our city, anything we can do to make people have at least maybe a scintilla of a better idea of where they want to go may be a good thing. So this would be consistent with the signage of the Camrio Premium Outlet Center. We do get a lot of people from outside the city that are not familiar with our roads here, so I do believe that directional signs are important, and for that and, and other reasons, I can support this. I prefer maybe to look, because they are a sales stack generator, a revenue generator, to look into the cost, but having said all that, my understanding is that it would not be consistent with what our past practices are.
I can answer your question. I can answer your question. There used to be a factory store on Winchester for Olga women's undergarments. It was the factory, and they had a store in the back of it.
Okay.
That's a factory store.
How long ago was that?
They went out of business probably in 1990.
1990, okay. Yeah, they were still manufacturing some stuff in 1990 a little bit.
And then they started tearing everything down there behind the bowling alley down.
Thank you.
Well, I guess it's my night to, I guess it's my night to offer a contrarian view. I support the renaming of the street signs. I have no difficulty with that. The question is, who pays for it? As a lawyer, I believe in the concept of precedence, right? And precedent is important. But the precedent that the city manager gave us here is entirely distinguishable. I can't compare the American Legion in 2007, as a nonprofit, to the business entity, the for-profit entity that owns the outlet centers. The two are completely distinguishable. Let's take an analogy. If the hospital, if St. John's PV were to come to us and say, "Gosh, we got to rename, was it Antonio? We need to rename Antonio, because, and we think it ought to be named, I don't know, Dignity Health, or Hospital Drive, or so on." I think this counsel would say, "Well, we might go along with that, but the city's not going to pay for that signage." I think the same logic applies here. I'm about as pro, you know, I'm about as pro-business as you can get, and I value greatly, and I'm not minimizing this at all, the, what the importance of the outlet centers are to the city. But I think this is really a matter of principle. I think the business owner should pay for the new signage. It's at their request. And I have to admit, I'm kind of underwhelmed by the, by the quote-unquote "driver guidance" argument that's in our materials. If I'm driving down 101, I think I'm reasonably capable of ascertaining where the outlet centers are, just by opening my eyes. And I know we get a lot of out-of-town guests, et cetera, a lot of international visitors, and I'm not denigrating that in any way, shape, or form. But I think folks can reasonably find the outlet centers. Having good signage, though, is important, I agree. But in this case, it's being specifically requested by the business. I don't think our prior precedent holds here. And so I can, I can support this, but if I'm understanding the form of staff recommendation, it would be to have the city pay for that signage, I can't support, I can't support that. I can support changing it if the signage is paid for by the business owner. As far as the marketing materials go for other businesses, I'm understanding that's really kind of a non-issue, so I'm not going to go there.
Your Honor?
Mr. Morgan?
I don't think it's going to affect, affect the factory outlet mall one way or the other. When you go anywhere in California, when we go on conferences, what do they say when they say Camrio? "Oh, that's where the factory outlet mall is." And so directional signs, I don't even pay attention to being factory drive. You just pass, you see Premium Outlets right there on the wall, on the big signs, you know it's there. And so you just turn in and go to it. If someone wants to name, change the name, I think maybe we're asking them to see if they want to pay for it. That's it.
I suddenly had, my memory worked while you were talking. I remember the last time now that they came before us, and one of the reasons that it was turned down was, was the fact that that name was requested by the outlet mall when they originally designed it and wanted, they named that street Factory Store Drive. Now, it was a factory outlet mall, meaning it supposedly came directly from the factory to here. That's why it came, and they shortened it to Factory Store. But I think that's why it was turned down before, is you asked for it, live with it. I think that was basically what they were told, maybe 10 years ago, or whenever it was. So that is, is kind of, kind of goes with what you're saying. Now, if they want to make that change, I think I'm with Mr. Tremblay on this one. While I don't know that it's necessary, because I don't think it's keeping people from finding it, when you are the number one tourist attraction in Ventura County, obviously, people are finding the outlet mall. But if it's that important to them, that they want to do that, then I would support it. And we're talking $3,000, it's more the principal thing, I think we're talking about here. That, give them the approval if they're willing to pay, and maybe we could set a maximum, a maximum of three, and anything over three, you know, if it's $30 or whatever, we could do it. But I think I would support it that way. But the one question that popped in my mind also while you were, and more of a question, how long does it take all of these apps and everything to make these changes? For how many years will they have a Factory Store Drive?
A lot of times, it's immediately.
So if you have a good app, it will happen that quick? A bad app?
If you have an app that.
Send you to Santa Barbara.
Depends on what you're paying for updates.
Is that the answer you were going to give me?
The county base maps are updated every six months, so usually, as maps get recorded and final, it usually has a six-month lag time, or shorter. But apps sometimes do pick it up sooner.
So will it be done by Christmas? By Black Friday?
That was just.
I don't think it matters on Black Friday. However, the last time, it was shortly after we had another request to change the name of that same street, you might remember, to Avenue of the Star.
Oh.
Yes, they asked that.
I remember that, that one street that goes off.
That's the same street.
Yeah, they want Avenue of the Star, I remember that.
Avenue of the Star. Ventura County Star.
They tried that.
Yes. Okay.
So I would move, I would move that the council adopt a resolution renaming Factory Stores Drive to Premium Outlets, contingent upon the outlet center paying for the cost of the street sign replacement.
Second.
The motion in a second? Everybody understand the motion and the second? And I see the city attorney.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the resolution as it's written, and I would just ask that Mr. Tremblay perhaps identify in the resolution where he wants the language that he just suggested to be added.
In Section 3.
Would you read it as you would change it? As it would be changed, please?
Well, okay, I guess we would go ahead, just go ahead and draft it up here.
At the cost of, the sole cost of the?
Section 3 should read, "The Department of Public Works is directed to install appropriate signs and pavement markings advising motorists of this order, contingent upon the outlet center paying..."
How about if we put the contingent upon at the beginning? Contingent upon the outlet center paying for the cost the Public Works Department is directed to install? No?
That's fine. Contingent upon the outlet center paying the full cost of the street sign replacement, street signs replacement, "The Department of Public Works is directed to install appropriate signs and pavement markings advising motorists of this order." It's about the best I can do on the fly, but I think that works. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to revise my motion accordingly.
Could you reread that, please, Mr. Tremblay?
I knew you were going to ask me for that.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
He said, "Contingent upon the outlet center paying..."
For the cost?
...outlet center paying.
You see?
No. The premium.
Here's what we need, here's what we need the.
The premium.
Here's what we need the court order.
A factory stores, center paying for the full cost of street signs replacement, is what you said.
That's what I said.
"The Department of Public Works is directed to install appropriate signs and pavement markings advising motorists of this order."
That would be my motion.
Did you catch that?
You know, I might suggest, instead of the words outlet center, you may want to change that to the Simon Group.
Okay.
It's fine, I'll go ahead and change my motion to incorporate that change.
The Simon Group or other, or other center management. Because, you know, Simon decides to sell, and they still don't, you know, they didn't, they don't do it, but they have a successor, you know, then.
Just say or designate.
Yeah.
Okay. The Simon Group or designee. Okay. So that would be, I would, I would also change my motion to reflect that. Please just don't ask me to read it back.
"Contingent upon the Simon Group or designee paying the full cost of street signs replacement, the Department of Public Works is directed to install appropriate signs and pavement markings advising motorists of this order." Okay. That was your motion, that was your second. And you accept the changes. Okay?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think in lieu of this, it might be opportunistic for us to bring this back to the policy committee and get a policy on how we're going to deal with this in the future. My understanding was that with the consistency of what we had done in the past, that we did not ask, you know, individuals or proprietors and/or businesses to pay for this, that this was going to be approved by the city, that the city and/or the redevelopment agent, whoever, would pay for this. So I'm thinking maybe we need to get some sort of a policy in case this does come forward with us again, if there ever is, like the St. John's Dignity or something does ever come before us about this. And if there is a potential, you know, economic opportunity for this, maybe we ought to have more clarification on who pays for this and who doesn't.
You know, I don't think we can have a policy for every single thing. I can only remember five times we've changed street names. There was this one, there was Veterans Way, there was when they changed whatever it was, Ponderosa West or something to Earl Joseph. There was changing, I forget what they were, what Bob was going to call it, but we changed Ventura Boulevard to.
Okay, and they didn't do the loop.
And we did the loop. No, it was going to be Bunkhouse Way, or something like that.
Yeah, that was one, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did change the one by Home Depot. Yes, we have done a few in there.
And when we put the library in, it was already called Nogal Street, and we changed that because we had two other, we still have two other Nogal Streets, and we changed it to Fieldgate. So those are the only ones I remember, but maybe those are five, but that's in about 40 years, because one of those was done before I got on the council.
And I think most of those were done at the request or the direction of the city, not at the request of someone else.
Almost all of them.
Like all the ones through, when we were doing Ventura, the change of Ventura Boulevard, that's when we did all of those. The library, obviously, was the city.
Yeah, and there was nobody on that street, so.
Well, I don't think that the, the Legion?
They requested that.
They requested that, right?
They did, and I think because they were a nonprofit, and it was.
They're the only people there.
Yeah, and it was, it was more of an honorary thing to, you know, to them.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about this. So are you saying that you think it should go to the policy committee before we vote on this?
No, no, not, not this one. I'm saying in the future, if it ever comes up.
Okay, so let's dispense with this one, and then we'll have your discussion. Okay, so is there any further discussion on this?
No.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
By the way, Kevin, the reason they changed that is because on the other side of the freeway, the same, was part of that same street, so there was no reason to have it separated, so they changed it to Veterans Way. Yes.
Okay.
I was here when we did it.
I think we all were here when we did it.
Well, it's on the other side of the freeway, you recall.
Yeah, I've forgotten about that half of it.
Okay, would you like to bring up a policy committee?
You know, my request is, perhaps it's not going to be something that we need to do ever again, however, comma, if it ever does come up, I mean, we do have a new hotel and convention site that's coming on board, we have a potential, potential nether shopping center, who knows when that gets developed, it may get developed, it may not be, but there could be some other instances of this, and it would be, I think, really good to tell, you know, that applicant right up front what they can do and what they can't do, as far as the cost with this. I don't think it would take a lot of time. I know that we've got a lot of policies in the city, I get all that. But as a business person, and if that's something that I wanted to bring up, it would, I think it would sure benefit, beneficial to me to know exactly what the policy is.
That is a question. Did anyone check to see if we had a policy? Because I am remembering a policy that it talks about fire department approval first, you have to do a request.
Yes, we have a street naming policy. What I, what I don't have recollection of is when we have a street renaming. We may actually address that, but it may not address, you know, the cost.
Yeah, so there is a policy there.
Okay, well, maybe the policy committee can look at that.
So that's my, you know, request.
Is this one of those things that two council members have to ask for?
You know, we still have to do that policy.
Oh, that policy hasn't come to us. I've been in too many meetings today, I tell you. Okay.
Well, if there isn't any other council members that are interested in pursuing this, let me know right now, because I think that's important.
You know, counsel, let me take a look at the policy and see what's appropriate. I think I can make a judgment here. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go to closed session and go back to our study session, we need to get our comments that are, what do they call them? Oral communications informational items, which do not require action, to be reported by staff and council. So, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney.
I have no items.
I'm not going to forget you this time, Mr. Tremblay.
Let me lead off. Let me lead off. Since the July 11 council meeting, I've attended the following meetings, the first July 12, the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California Board Meeting in Los Angeles, and I want to come back to that one in just a minute, because there's some informational items we all need to be aware of. On July 19, I attended the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Needs Assessment Liaison Committee with Mrs. McDonald, that meeting. I attended the state of the county luncheon, and also I had an EDC-VC board meeting, or as it's now called, the ED Collaborative. On July 23, I attended the investment committee with Mrs. Craven, and today, earlier today, I had a finance committee meeting for the Clean Power Alliance. And just talking about the Clean Power Alliance, I know that you all saw, I believe, that this all, this timeline that was at the Clean Power Alliance, as part of their agenda materials at the last meeting, I believe was all distributed to you. But I want to make sure, particularly since we're in public session, to reiterate that this is coming. This entire process is coming to Camrio, together with over two dozen other municipalities in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties. And the CPA Board next month will finalize its rate options, in terms of the default option, the 50, for example, the 36% RPS option, the 50% option, and the 100% option for renewables. And in our council, in between August to October of this year, is going to also have to select our default rate option with conservative guidance relative to Southern California Edison. In early November, Edison is going to file its updated rate forecast. In mid-November, the CPA Board will set its residential rates in time for the December pre-enrollment notice period. And in late December, Edison will set its final rates. Well, why is that all important? Because in the, we, city of Camrio, are looking to become part of this program in February of 2019. We have at least two statutory notices that have to go out prior to that time, one in December and one in January, but we have a lot of work to do in terms of educating city residents even prior to that time. And one of the things that I've been speaking with the city manager and staff about is, all right, what are we as a city needing to start educating our residents and those customers? And these are residential customers, because the non-residential customers will come later in 2019, it'll be in the second quarter. But this is just about arriving at the imminent stage now for residential customers in the city. So the timeline is coming, we're going to, we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of public. We're going to, we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of public education. And I just wanted to ask the City Manager whether, what the plan is as of right now for providing, you know, the statutory notices are going to go out, but we need to go way over and above that in terms of educating our residents as this. And as of, as things stand right now, what is staff's plan for that public education effort?
Primarily, or preliminarily, in October, we will have the CPA Public Information Officer here at City Council to do a presentation about CPA. What is it, what is it, you know, how does it affect citizens? And the various issues related to opting out. We are also beginning to review our website for CPA information, so that, that, all that information will be coordinated by October to be able to have the website, you know, fully ready to go. Also in October, I've reserved all the utility bills for messaging.
Good.
So that, that information is going out there. Of course, we'll be Facebooking this also. We'll also be using our government channel. We'll also be having information in City Scene. In fact, that'll be in the next City Scene for September, October.
Okay, good.
And so things are underway, and we're going to be fully prepared to, to provide a robust education program.
Okay, thank you. We've, so we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of work ahead. Clean Power Alliance has been very busy the last six months at least in terms of governance and getting underway. So we've got a lot of, a lot of education to, to go for our public. So I appreciate what staff is doing very much. That's it for me.
Mr. Kildee.
Yes, let's see, I attended two meetings. I attended VRSD, and I also attended July 17, the Streets and Transportation Meeting as well. Also, on another note, their shopping center is going on a facade renovation. So if anybody's out there wondering what's going on with that, it's a, facades being torn down and a new one's coming up, so hopefully improving, improvements. Also, as far as the speeds on our streets in town, I'm getting some calls about how we determine what the speed rate in our cities are. And I'm not asking for a long comment now, but maybe just a very short kind of dissertation, if you will, about how we set our speeds on our streets in the city. If you wouldn't mind, Dave, just a brief one.
Sure. State law, specifically the California Vehicle Code, lays out the requirements to post a street with a certain speed limit. And it requires a speed radar study done, being done periodically. There's certain timeframes that it has to be done. Every, every, I think it's between five and 10 years. There's a couple of different options you can follow in doing that. But essentially, it's a, and we do here in the city, we perform that quarterly, or I'm sorry, every four years, we will analyze a certain section, segment of streets. So we're actually doing it more often than necessary on checking with radar, certified radar equipment, the actual speeds. And the, the speed limit is set, what's, at what's called the nearest five mile an hour speed limit at the 85 percentile, which says 85%. It's the speed at which 85% of the vehicles are traveling. And so there's a, a state law that we follow, a prescribed procedure, with that study being done, certified by the traffic engineer and on file, and then our streets' speed limits are posted accordingly.
Okay, thanks.
All right, can I add? And one, one comment, Kevin. Sometimes they can go against that 85 percentile if there's a danger factor. We did, they did tell us we could go 40 miles an hour out there in front of, of Los Altos and the, and the, and the football, baseball fields. And we came, we went back and said, hey, wait a minute, we've got kids going here. They let us go back to 35. So you'll see 35 there, when you pass that, you see 40. But that's because we showed a danger factor.
And just one other, I did attend the street fair, and I had a good time there. And I know there'll be some more comments on that there, but there was a number of vendors. There's a number of people that I knew there, and I got some exercise.
You definitely did.
Mrs. McDonald.
Meetings, VCOC, VCTC, and Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Needs Assessment. Those were the three Brown Act meetings I attended. I'll just go quickly, because I know Mr. Morgan wants to talk about the Fiesta, so...
Maybe I don't.
Oh, maybe you don't? Yeah, I know you bit in that. I have one, one little complaint. The old Cocos needs to mow their lawn and pull their weeds. I was giving them the credit that it was a lawn, but...
And trim palm trees.
Yeah. Is there a time on when they're going to do something there, or are they still going to do something?
So they actually wanted to start on the trees, and based on bird nesting, they couldn't start working on the trees at this time, but will definitely get on the weeds.
Repeating that again, red-tailed hawk that we had heading the creek out there, they've been doing for years because red-tailed hawk, never mind, I won't go into it.
Do they have a timeframe on when they propose starting their car wash?
They're in plan check right now, and the comments were reasonable for the first plan check, so we anticipate that hopefully it'll go smooth and that they'll get a permit within the next six to eight weeks.
And my last comment has to do with the Clean Power Alliance. One of the questions I would have, and I'm assuming you, you talk about this, I would have a hard time making a decision what I wanted to do until I saw what the rates were. So I guess we can tell them about what the procedures were, but until you set the rates, I wouldn't be able to decide it. And then the other question I would have is, what happens when the rates come out and everyone chooses the least expensive so that you're not doing the plans that buy the, the energy efficient? Because don't you have three tiers?
That's right, Mrs. McDonald. Do you have three tiers?
What happens if everybody wants the cheaper version?
Right, well, Clean Power Alliance will set its residential rates in mid-November. Edison will issue a letter in late December with its final rates. That would all occur prior to a decision by a residential consumer whether to opt out, because at that point, the rates will be defined.
So what are we doing in all this education right now when we don't have anything other than to talk about maybe the program, but...
Well, I think it's important to let people know that this is, this is coming, because it's a pretty significant change. It's significant in the way that people purchase their power. They'll still get their bills. Their, Southern California Edison will still be billing for its T and transmission and distribution facilities, that whole segment of the bill. But this, the, the power purchase segment of the bill will be through Clean Power Alliance. So that's question one. Question two...
It was what happens with, for the Clean Power Alliance piece? So if they've opted in, but they all opt for the least expensive, so you're not getting, using a lot of the renewal energy piece?
Well, they won't have actually opted in. They will be, under state law, they will be in unless they opt out.
So they stay in, and then they get to choose.
Right, and then there's, then they will be able to choose, which is one of the, which is one of the salutary things about this, about, about this. People will be able to choose what, which tier they want to be on.
So what happens to the whole viability or the whole? To me, there was always two things. One, they thought they could get cheaper energy, which we'll see if that holds.
I think it'll be competitive.
The other one was hopefully getting more renew, using more renewal and renewable energy. But if everyone opts for the less expensive version and doesn't pick the more, the Plan B or C, will you still be viable and be able to?
Well, that, that's a great question, right? Because you're looking into the crystal ball. First of all, I think there will be a lot of people...
You think so?
Clean, well, in the entire structure of Clean Power Alliance, not just the City of Camarillo, but, but all of the cities which encompass Clean Power Alliance, I think there will be a significant number of residents who will choose higher tiers. I don't know what Camarillo residents are going to do, but based on, at least anecdotally, having attended the meetings, I think there will be a, a large segment of folks who will choose the higher tiers. But that's sort of remained, remains to be seen, but you have to spread that. I mean, that, that residential base is spread among a lot of people, so...
That always sounds good until you have to pay the bill.
Well, that's it, and so, so the, it's a JPA, and they've been spending an awful lot of time on financial matters and on forecasting. And as of today, the report to the Finance Committee was that in turn, and remember, it's, it's only operating on a limited basis right now in the county of LA and a couple of municipalities. But it is ahead, in terms of revenue, it is ahead of the projections, at least the initial projections. And, you know, hopefully that, that trend continues. Because over time, the JPA will have to, you know, I could go on and on about... But anyway, over time, the JPA will have to build up sufficient reserves in order to allow some of the CCE program, or CCA program components that everybody wanted to have accomplished as well. Anyway. Maybe I shouldn't respond any longer, because I'll get in trouble under the Brown Act, but anyway.
Mr. Morgan.
I want to follow up on that just a little bit, because in talking to Edison, I talked to those guys too, a lot of times, two guys retired, they're in a band, they told me all about this. They're, they are required by the state to keep increasing that anti-whatever gas, I mean, electricity, you know, the, what do you call it? Anti-fuel, anti-fuel for animals. Anyway...
You mean renewables?
Yes, renewables. They have been required to keep increasing the better, better energy. And they've been doing that, and they're past it right now. When they get to the point where they're almost doing as much as this other one is, and it's cheaper, what's going to happen?
Remains, remains to be seen. I'm, I'm not, I don't think you can, I don't think you can guess, I don't think you can predict with any certainty at any time what Edison is going to do.
I know, but now they're...
Prior to final, final to a prior rate filing, until the next thing goes to the PUC.
I need to make a statement. I, I think you've reached the point where if you want to have further discussion on this, you might want to put it on a future agenda.
That's right, I caught myself a couple minutes ago. Thank you.
Okay, I've got two meetings I, I went to first. I went to the Streets and Transportation, which you heard tonight, the two issues, and we, you know, decided and referred it on. Association Water Agency, AWA, we did mostly discuss, you know, the budget summary, and, and we need to pay our dues, guys. All the other cities have paid theirs. So we better check and see, I got the little thing saying ours hasn't been paid yet. No, 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 no. Anyway, that, we need to pay our stuff. Now, I'll go into the Fiesta, like you said. My two weeks were taken up, that's why my voice is almost not here. It's better than it was, but, but you get wiped out in the sun, working all day, all night. Next day, get up and go out and clean up on Monday morning in the heat. It just, it's, it's been a tough time, but that was probably one of the best Fiestas we ever had. We made more than we ever made in a carnival ride, so we hit the top, I mean, hit a lot more. And as far as shows, motorcycle show is great that Harley-Davidson put on. And they know they can do better, and they're going to come back next year trying to make it even better. So I see that as a, as an exciting event in the future. The bikes were of all natures. I mean, I saw some that were like, you pedal it first, then it goes, and a lot of others. But that was exciting. The car show was bigger than it's ever been, had 95 cars. We're trying to figure out where to put more cars on side streets, maybe, because we did that once, put the old ones on a side street, and it got judged. And we had four of them that came in, couldn't get in, so they parked over at the park, and they jacked their cars up, and they were beautiful. And so we had a very, what would you call it, very exciting run. Our entertainment, I got to tell you, that's why I wanted to find out tonight what's going on at the fair, because we had some bands that were just terrific. And our Stuart Scher is the guy that gets our bands for us. They, he did a great job, I mean, real great job. You had, the park was full, and the dance stage, it's, I put in the middle of this whole thing, packed all the time. Your beer gardens, you couldn't find a seat on either end. Knights of Columbus are the, you know, rotarian, rotary. But bands, we had, we had so much at the other end too, that piled over in the other street, but now that's not a, that's not a emergency lane anymore, it goes around. So I let them do it this year. Last year, I had to push them back out, but they liked the tree, trees, shade and all that stuff. So we had a fantastic time, got a lot of comments and letters and things telling us how good we did, and they'd come back next year, do the same thing. This is really tough for my, my wife and I, because it's, it takes, not, not just, not just we're operating the computer, getting this, doing this, but gathering all the money for the donations and all that stuff, it's tough. But next year, we'll be back and try to make it better than ever. So that's it.
Okay. I attended a lot of meetings, but the Brown Act meetings I attended were a Finance, an Investment Committee meeting on Monday morning. And today, I had three consecutive Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meetings before I came here. I was going to ask about Cocos too, but I have another one about weeds, and they did clear around the Sholley House. But above Sholley House, I don't know, is that the Spanish Hills Homeowners Association or who that owns that? They are taller than the Sholley House. I mean, those weeds are awful over there, so they had been all acting together, but they've cleaned up the, the old house area, and now the, the others stand out. And then I have another question of, how much longer will that caution tape and the, the orange pillars be out there at the end of, I think it's People's Street, where, where they, they were using as a staging area for the construction of the monument and the new landscaping along Daly? It's whatever street's at the back end there.
Correct, correct, and that is in place to, as you may recall before, there were several paths worn through that entire property at different locations. So in that area, which was a little more sensitive with the new landscaping growing, we've kept that cordoned off. So as, we're getting close to the end of the plan establishment period that the contractor is, is responsible for. And like I said, I believe we're getting close to the end of that. At that time, we look at removing those, wanting those plans to establish as much as possible.
It's looking really good. It just, every time, every morning when I drive by there, I, I just think of what an improvement that is.
A lot of compliments. You're right.
Okay, that's all I have.
I do too.
Can I do one more weed, since we were on weed patrol? Upland on the top of Cayega's Creek on the south side? There are a lot of weeds right up to the sidewalk that are really, really dry, and I would hate to see a fire start and work its way all the way down that, that creek. So we need to...
Southeast, southwest.
So Upland... South side, I guess we're south side. South side of Upland, down where you can see, you know, see the...
East side of the creek or west side? Oh, you're making me get my directions. East side, yeah. East side.
Am I going uphill or am I going down?
East side.
Yeah, east side's uphill.
Yeah. So it'd be the west side, I'm sorry, the ocean side.
That's what I thought.
The ocean side. But it, that's really bad, and then the creek itself is dry. So we really need to get ourselves a buffer along the edge there. I mean, we're talking big ol' huge tumble, dry tumble weeds and...
Yep, we'll look at that.
Thank you. And I don't know if that's us or what, or the county.
Right, we'll, we'll figure that out. It's a joint, it's an area that includes both jurisdictions.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I just want to thank our Police Chief Dave and the boys out there working, because they made their presence known. And here you have 35,000 to 40,000 people, you know what kind of, any kind of rate, I mean, someone did some sort of criminal activity, you know what it was? One guy was drunk, came out of one of the bars, not the Fiesta. That was it for the whole weekend. So I think Camarillo's done a great job, and I, I love our people, because we keep things going and keep it safe.
Okay, we will now recess the council meeting again. We will go into, I don't know which first, either a closed session or complete our study session, and I don't think we anticipate any kind of announcement after.
That's correct.
Okay, and at the end of those, we'll adjourn.